We're going to call the meeting back to order. It is 10 minutes to seven. Let's first start with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In closed session, in the matter of case number 2015-050387, the board approved a settlement agreement by the following roll call vote: Ayes, Calado, Sharp, Lucky, Reed, Vanenbosse; Noes, Nay, None, abstain, None. The facts and circumstances and a copy of the settlement agreement are being withheld due to the student privacy rights pursuant to 20 U.S.C. Section 1232-G and Education Code, Section 49060 at Sac. Do I have someone to make approval of the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Okay, before we do that, we're going to substitute on item L1, a substitute personnel assignment order. And you have copies. Okay, so when we get to that item, we'll...
Okay.
So if someone would make that motion with that change.
I'll make the motion with the change.
Second. Okay. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Board President announcements. I have a couple. The school district is currently enrolling new students for the 2015-16 school year at the enrollment center located here at 375 via Almar PVS Estates. The enrollment center, along with all district and school offices, will be closed on Friday, August 14th, in observance of California Admissions Day. I always wondered what that was, but, okay. School's off for California Admissions Day. For currently enrolled students, back-to-school information required forms will be available at the district and all school websites on Friday, July 24th. The first day of school is Monday, August 31st, and all schools will have a minimum day schedule that day. So yes, it's the middle of July and we're already talking about the start of school. All right. Approval of the minutes. Can someone move on June 25th meeting?
I move approval.
Actually, I have a question. Jana, in the title it says June 25th and then below it says June 11th, but it is June 25th, isn't it?
The exhibit has June 25th.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Report of the superintendent.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome our guest here tonight. It's a fun night for us for a lot of reasons, but I'd like to congratulate Lydia Kano and her group and thank the board for their direction for the refi of our existing bond debt. As we discussed at some previous meetings, we were, you know, there was a point in time when we thought that the savings would be somewhere around $500,000, but due to some late developments in Greece and having their own issues, it actually increased our savings by quite a bit. We ended up saving $1.1 million for taxpayers on the peninsula, so that's really a positive for the entire district. Again, there's no direct benefit to the district. That is all taxpayer benefit, but the work, the preparation that went into that was pretty outstanding, so good news for the entire district. Tonight, looking forward to presentations, we have presentations dealing with big topics tonight, including elementary report cards, facilities use, maintenance, agreements, fees, enrollment trends, and some potential options. Again, at least three pretty big opportunities for the board to have discussions about topics that are staring us in the face in our future and give us some time to think big about some pretty complex issues. Still very impressed with the amount of professional development that's taking place even over the summer. Anywhere from teachers learning more about our math programs and the enthusiasm around the math programs has been off the charts. Every training I walk into, I continue to see smiles, so I continue to walk in. But some really exciting work there. And then more recently, I'd like to thank Trent Bahadur Singh for his leadership in the training of Microsoft 365 for all employees, and that's anywhere from our teachers to office managers to anyone who touches a computer. But the work even just to get everyone email addresses and then to now train them on the power of Microsoft 365, which is, I came from a Google district and thought that that was the greatest thing ever. Microsoft 365 is infinitely better. It's a quality product that can, I think we're just scratching the surface of what the tools in Microsoft 365 can do. So Trent, thank you for putting that together and thank you for everyone who's come through the trainings. That's it for me tonight.
Thank you. All right. Board member reports. Barbara, do you have anything to?
I have nothing to report at this time.
And nothing for SoCal. Malcolm?
Nothing to report for the Technology Advisory Committee. I will report that last Wednesday I did attend the luncheon, monthly luncheon, with the four mayors of our four cities and the president of the library board. And a continuing topic of conversation as we've had at this board table is water and the concerns. No, not because of rain last week. The drought's not over and we have the 36% cut like everybody else. The mayors were surprised to find that that 36% for us also included our playfields, that playfields were indeed not exempt from the 36%. And there was some real concern, especially with those cities where our playfields are their only playfield, on how we're going to make sure they don't turn into just dirt. So we had a lively discussion about that last Wednesday.
Nothing for either. Linda?
I just had one quick thing. I met, really interesting talk last Friday, I met with Assemblyman Hadley and had a wonderful nonpartisan conversation about education, which was, maybe I'm really naive to think that, but, and some of the things I think we'll probably talk about later, but it was just interesting to hear the, what you have to go through in Sacramento and just what he has to deal with in terms of just trying to get anything done, whether you agree with everything he does or not. Really interesting person and definitely someone who's a big fan of education issues in general.
Great. All right. I have nothing to add. Public comment on non-agenda items. Ronald Mueller, or Mueller, if I mispronounce it, I apologize.
Yeah, my name's Ron Mueller and I'm part of Occupy PV. Last board meeting, Mr. Grelman spoke regarding the issue of the free speech area in the farmer's market at Peninsula High. And he had previously mailed an email to the board, and when he referenced that email, it seems not to have reached the board. And he could not make it tonight, but he requested me to provide a copy of his email to each member of the board regarding the free speech area, which I have here. And Mrs. Sullivan from the Palos Verdes Democrats is going to be discussing this issue further, so I thank the board.
Thank you. Well, then we'll transition into Connie Sullivan.
This is great. I fully expected to sit there for an hour while you did other stuff before I could come up and talk to you, so I'm really happy about that. I'm going to repeat myself a little bit and then give you further information. In May, the manager, oh, am I supposed to say my name? Connie Sullivan, Palos Verdes Estates. In May, the manager of the farmer's market told me that he was going to try to move the farmer's market to Penn High, and then he was going to enter into negotiations with the school district to do that. Then he told me, he had a meeting with school district administration, and he called me immediately after that meeting, backing up. He had promised that there could be a free, he would include a free speech area in his farmer's market. Then he had the meeting, he called me right after and was told that he couldn't have a free speech area, that his understanding of what he was told was that that violated some school district policy. So he didn't include that in his application. So his application for the farmer's market includes agriculture vendors, food vendors, and craft vendors only, and not a free speech area. So when we asked administration if we could be included, we got back the information that the farmer's market application only included those three things and didn't include a free speech zone. So we're kind of going in a circle now because he was told he couldn't include that, or at least that's what he thought he was told. And we've been told that if we want to have a free speech zone, that we should submit an application, pay appropriate fees and insurance. I think you probably know that the PV Democrats and the Occupy PV people and the Jehovah's Witnesses are not going to be capable of paying fees and insurance every Sunday to exercise free speech. So it's a complete barrier to doing that. My question is, if the farmer's market manager were to submit an amended application to include a free speech zone, would that be considered by the district? And I've posed that question in an email, haven't received a response yet. The farmer's market manager said, has told me, he would be willing to do that. So that is the question I hope I can get answered. Thank you very much.
Andrea Bond?
My name's Andrea Bond. I'm speaking on behalf of my daughter, Emma Chang, who is an eighth grader at PBIS. Emma is a swimmer. She swims at least 12 hours every week on top of going to school regularly, and she benefited very much last year from the independent study PE program. This year, we got her paperwork for ISP, which includes some new requirements, and the form specifically that I want to get some clarification and guidance on is this Hold Harmless Indemnity and Insurance Agreement, which they're asking all of the clubs to sign. It's a pretty hefty order, asking the clubs to include the PVUSD as part of the insurance and to agree to not only not sue them, but to defend them in all these different cases. I've been told that my club cannot sign this form, and I understand that it's a scary form to sign because our swim club is not owned by PVUSD. We don't practice in any pools that are owned by PVUSD. The school district doesn't manage her team. And so we can meet every requirement except for this form, and I know she's not the only athlete who's having problems with this. And so if you could provide maybe a way around it or some clarification or guidance, because it really makes a difference for student athletes to have that extra hour, and it's helped her. She's a great student and she's a great swimmer, and we want her to be able to do both.
I will share your card with the appropriate person who will get back to you. Joan Davidson?
Hello, everybody. We know that the district is getting a lot of new money this year. What's unclear to me is how much is ongoing and how much is one time, because I heard the Capitol Advisors Group and it's unclear, and I hope that you can explain that to everybody at this meeting. I know that in the local control funding formula, by 2020 PV will receive, will receive her ADA $9,100 a child, when Centinela Valley in the same county will receive $14,163 per child. So we're getting diminishing funds, and I want to know, since you're getting this windfall of money, how much you're putting away for a rainy day? Because there's a lot of question about that, and the, actually, California PTA is trying to get everyone to save money. So what is this district looking at as a vision to do that? I've also read this, tonight's agenda, and there's a lot of spending going on, so I'm questioning, and there are a lot of teachers here who'd like to see a raise, so I'm wondering what we're doing as far as putting away money for that as well. I saw that there's $50,000 more for professional development to teach teachers how to teach the new Math &amp; Focus book, but I recall that you already put out $150,000 to train teachers for Math &amp; Focus. So I'm just wondering, how hard is it going to be for the kids to learn Math &amp; Focus if the teachers have to have all this professional development to teach it? Number two, even though the district has employed multiple legal firms, it has two more on the agenda tonight, and it's totally unclear to the public why you need them for business. What business is it going to be? And some of them are $335 an hour. That's a lot of money, more money going out the door. Administrators, contracts are on the agenda tonight. Some of you are going to be making $7,000 or more for car allowances. That's a lot of money added to your base salary. And last but not least, you have the KC exam to do a special ad, but what is unclear to me and to the public is the KC exam was eviscerated or stopped by the state senate, which voted not to continue the contract for the KC high school exam, exit exam. The state assembly, to my knowledge, as of three days ago, has not voted on this. So we have no KC high school exit exam, but the state senate voted that instead we're going to have the Smarter Balance tests for 11th graders. The problem with that is Oregon and Washington State just got their math scores from Smarter Balance, and they have a 30 and 35% passing rate. So are we going to be left with students who get a 30% passing rate on the 11th grade Smarter Balance tests in this district or in California, and what are we going to do about it? Thank you.
Sandy Valeri?
Hi, good evening. Hope you guys are all having a good summer. I just wanted to say that I'm really happy and thankful to see that our district has finally decided to participate in Transparent California. This happened just this past month, that we are finally on Transparent California, and I'm really very happy to see it. It's high time. All the cities on the Hill have been participating. Most of our neighboring, our neighboring districts have been on Transparent California for ages and ages and ages, and it's high time that this district came out of the dark and stopped hiding itself and started being more transparent with how we do business and started also unveiling ourselves. And being on Transparent California is certainly a great step in the right direction, and I applaud this step forward. Thank you. Unfortunately, the latest data on Transparent California is from 2012, so we can go back in time and we can see who used to work here and what they used to make three years ago, but we have no idea who currently works here and what they're currently making now. One of my friends from PTA contacted Mr. Bowles recently and asked for a, an organization chart. Very simple, normal request. Most of our neighboring school districts have this posted on their website. It's not a big, it's not a big deal. Any of us who've ever worked in any business environment know what an organization chart is. It's no hidden secret. They print them all the time, and like I said, most of them are available on any district website. We don't have one. The best Mr. Bowles could provide her with, again, was something from 2012 that is completely outdated with titles that don't exist anymore, and even that one didn't have anybody's name on it. It was just a bunch of outdated titles with nobody's name on it. Apparently, we don't know in this district how we're organized, how we're structured, who works for who, or where. How complicated could it be for this district to put together a simple organization chart and post it on the website for everybody to see? This is a public organization. It's a public business. The public has a right to know. Is there any disagreement on any of these facts? It shouldn't take a writ of Congress. We shouldn't have to fill out a bunch of paperwork to ask these very simple questions. We should be able to say, gee, who's in charge of special ed? And find out. We should be able to say, who's in charge of, you know, how many people does Trent have working for him? And find out. What are all the departments under special ed? And who's in charge of the different directorships? And what are their organizations? How is it structured? If I want to get some, find out who's in charge of which department, so I know who to go ask a question to. I should be able to look up and find out, and anybody should. This is ridiculous. It's pathetic.
Thank you.
And at $270,000 a year, I think our, I think that our superintendent should be able to spend an hour writing an organization chart.
Okay, thank you. As you know very well from sitting through meetings, we have an organization chart, so would you, John, will please address that. We're now up to discussion action L1, and this is where we have the replacement.
Okay, so Dr. Austin is passing down the amended personnel administrative item, and Trent, or Jana will be placing copies for the public on the back table.
Okay, if we've done passing, then I'll have you go ahead and introduce then.
And at this point, we are very pleased to introduce our...
John, are we going to vote? We do, we're going to do a vote.
You're going to do a vote first?
Okay. Sorry. It's my fault. Just waiting for Jana to put everything out. All right, so what I'm going to do is, the report is long. John, would you highlight the change, please, and then we'll ask for a motion?
Sure. This is a longer report. It includes most of the regular annual step or range increases and changes in positions. Significant announcement in this administrative employment report is the recommendation for the new principal of Silver Spur Elementary to be Marta Jevanwa Richardson.
Smattering of applause, that's always a good start. All right, so can we have someone make a motion, please?
I move approval.
I will second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, even a better start.
Thank you, board members, and at this point, we would like to introduce to you and to the public, Ms. Jevanwa. Please come to the podium, and we'll have you say a few words.
Thank you so much for the welcome. So like John said and the board members said, my name is Marta Jevanwa Richardson, and I am extremely happy to be, to have been selected principal at Silver Spur Elementary. And I want to thank all the Silver Spur amazing teachers who are here to support me, so thank you so much for being here. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up and I completed my undergraduate studies in the Basque Country, which is in northern Spain. I came here to Los Angeles, it's going to be 20 years in August, to pursue graduate studies at USC in linguistics and language acquisition. I also taught at USC for four years, Spanish language and literature, and after that, I moved on and I became an elementary teacher for Los Angeles Unified School District. I taught different grades, kindergarten, first, third, and fifth grade. And then I was assistant principal for six years at large elementary schools, and in the summer of 2010, I became principal at Trinity, where I have been up until now that I have been selected as principal at Silver Spur Elementary. So just a little bit about my philosophy of teaching. As you can see, I bring a lot of experiences into this new job as instructional leader at Silver Spur, but my objective as a principal is to maximize the potential of all students by recognizing their individual strengths and their individual talents. It's my goal to continue the amazing programs that have already been started and are taking place at Silver Spur Elementary, and also to continue the implementation of the Common Core, state standards, and the 21st century teaching strategies. But I also believe that school, families, and communities need to work together to support learning, and that all decisions need to be based on what is best for children, and children always come first. About myself, I'm very energetic, I'm creative, I'm enthusiastic about teaching and learning, and about educating children, including my own stepson that will be attending also Silver Spur. And I'm always for encouraging a collective focus on student learning, and it will be my job at Silver Spur to continue promoting collaboration among staff and the community, and always using reflection to improve our practice. I am also a resident of Palos Verdes. I just moved here four months ago, and I can tell you how excited I am that I am going to be working for our children and for our community. So I can't wait to get started. My first day will be August 10th, and once again, I just want to thank you for your time and for this opportunity to serve our students. Thank you.
Yep, she's...
Alfredo Garcia's, where are you guys going?
Yeah, just cleared the room for us. All right.
All right, we'll go on to L2. That's probably Lydia.
Tonight, you have a resolution before you for the preparation of seismic screening assessment of our district school buildings.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Board policy workshops. Don, you're going to lead this one?
Actually, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Bose, who's going to lead you through a look at calendars. This will be a time to pull out your calendars. And our attachment, our exhibit has week of dates, but we'd like to nail down some dates and times that work for board members for policy review. I will add a couple other options as well, would be if there are weeks that just don't work, just because we have something as a placeholder doesn't mean we have to hold a meeting every week. Okay, so John, why don't you go ahead and lead us through this?
Sure thing. So we have policies which we need to annually review in order to stay compliant with changing laws, court decisions, and new guidelines from regulatory bodies, and we receive...
have been identified as having some type of structural designation that would put them at risk. And so what this resolution is do, is for, is to take us to the next step in evaluating the effect of the seismic event at the identified structures. And so, once the board approves the resolution, then we'll work closely with our attorneys in identifying what our next steps are, and then we'll be reporting back to the board on what we can and can't do, and how we will apply for funding for those projects.
Any questions? Could someone entertain a motion?
Yeah, I move approval of resolution number 1-2015/16, preparation of a seismic screening assessment of district school buildings.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Board policy workshops. Don, you're gonna lead this one?
Actually, I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Boz, who's gonna lead you through a look at calendars. This will be a time to pull out your calendars. And our attachment, our exhibit has week of dates, but we'd like to nail down some dates and times that work for board members for policy review. I will add a couple other options as well, would be if there are weeks that just don't work, just because we have something as a placeholder doesn't mean we have to hold a meeting every week. Okay, so John, why don't you go ahead and lead us through this?
Sure thing. So we have policies which we need to annually review in order to stay compliant with changing laws, court decisions, and new guidelines from regulatory bodies. And we receive excellent advisement from that, from the California School Board Association. There are a number of policies, they're all available online to staff and to the public as well, and when you walk through them, you can see what a momentous task this can be. So towards that end, we're recommending board policy workshops to happen once per month, generally aligned with the same week as board meetings. And we'd like to come away from this meeting with dates for the year, and we can then amend this calendar and publish the dates.
Right, so I'm gonna ask a preliminary question, because the calendar's going through an entire year, and that makes an assumption that we go beyond an election cycle. Do we, as a board, want to entertain doing a whole year, knowing that maybe up to two new people that would have to fit in their schedule? Or do we want to just go through the first four dates? Any thoughts either way?
I suggest we go through the whole year, then when we have the new people on, if there is a problem, we can change them, but at least you have something down.
Okay, what's your feeling, Malcolm?
That's good for me. I'd rather get it. Solid.
All right, but I just won't participate in the ones afterwards. Okay, that's fine. All right, so do you want me to do this, or do you want to do it, John?
Well, we could start with the week where our August 12th board meeting falls.
Can I ask a logistical question?
What time are you thinking about doing this?
Yes, exactly.
What time and where?
John, let me interject here a little bit. We do have some standing meetings that would be problematic, and then there are some things that we can move around pretty easily. So Tuesday afternoons are typically pretty bad. Monday mornings are good, Tuesday mornings are good. Monday afternoons, we can make work. We could, you know, depending on how tough everyone wants to be, we could do a Monday meeting on the same day that we have a Monday board meeting, depending on what your, what your calendars, or I'm sorry, Wednesday, depending on what your calendars look like. If we go Thursdays and Fridays, that kind of defeats the purpose of doing it on the front end of a board meeting, but it would just slow down our timeline a little bit. It's okay, too. Thursday mornings are standing meetings. Fridays are generally open, except for PTAs every Friday. But then again, I don't have to necessarily personally be at every one of these either. So it could be that I'm at a PTA thing.
So before we go to, there's kind of some philosophical questions, I think, that we've gone back and forth with over the years. So one was, we used to have the meetings early on, in the morning on a weekday, nine o'clock, and for a variety of reasons, we stopped doing that, and then we bumped them to the afternoon, with the idea that ideally, all the board members could get there. And then we stopped having them as regularly as we were. So somewhere in there, I think, before we even start picking dates, we might want to have a discussion on whether we want them during the day or in the afternoon, and maybe the pros and cons.
Policy meetings work the best during the day, because that's when all the staff members are there. And the purpose of the policy meeting is not to do a first or second read, but it's to go through it in detail with the staff, and work out some things with everyone there. If you bump it to the afternoon, well, we bumped it to the afternoon, and I don't think, did we have one policy meeting? I don't thi, every policy meeting we had was co-opted for something else.
So we had them.
We never actually, I don't believe we ever have, ever had an afternoon slash evening policy meeting, and you know, after-
Well, we have had the meetings, we just didn't approach them the way we used to, where we would go line by line and go through a policy. We had many policy meetings in the evening to talk about major, and you're right, they did get co-opted.
This is different. When we, when we're talking about doing these policies, it's, it's, it has to do with the policies that come through from-
CSBA.
Yeah, CSBA. And, and they come through quarterly, and there are lots and lots of policies. And some of them are just small changes to an existing policy, some we don't even have, but some are major things. And certainly, if it was a major thing and you needed everyone there at the same time, you could bump it to an evening meeting. But to take care of a lot of it, you can do it so efficiently during the day when the staff is here. It's just, it's, we've, in the time I've been here, we've tried it every which way. And the, and the one way that works the best is really a morning, when everyone's still fresh, because it takes, you know, some concentration to go through all that verbiage. And it, that's just my opinion. It works best in a morning with the staff.
Looking, looking through some of the records, some meetings where you have more complicated policies, only a handful may have been addressed. Other days, as many as 20 policies were addressed in one meeting, and then they, they would then be introduced for a first and second read at regular board meetings.
Well, having, having participated in those generally Monday morning meetings, oftentimes there were only three board members.
Sometimes only two.
Well, if there were only two, it didn't happen.
No, you can still do it without the, it doesn't have to-
Yeah.
It was agendized if there were going to be three, but you can, most of, a lot of times, the policy meetings have not been agendized. It's just a meeting set up. It's not a formal board meeting, and you just go and have the policy meeting with two board members.
And, and of course, Barbara should remember at one point that this work was done by a subcommittee, and I believe you were a member of that subcommittee, along with Ellen Perkins, who did the first blush at the, you know, at the request of the board. If you hold, if you hold the meetings, as Barbara said, as we used to at that time of day, you could get, you could get a lot of work done. But it's just finding that time and that day. That's, that, therein lies the rub.
I would, I'm actually okay with whatever we decide. I'm like, at least Larry has been. I probably missed more meetings than anybody else besides Larry because of work. I would ask that they're not on Tuesdays, then I'll have a greater chance of being able to attend. And I actually like the idea of either a subcommittee that does a first read, and/or some sort of practice that we can agree on for kind of hot-button, high-level policies that should come to the full meeting or an evening meeting, because some of them are often just routine changes that need to be made. So I can see the benefits to both. I know at times, we've been criticized by, when we didn't have them in the afternoon evening, that teachers couldn't make it, or other folks couldn't make it, but in reality, not a lot of people usually attend the board meeting, the policy meeting. So I, I'm like some sort of hybrid somewhere in there, that would be my recommendation.
Linda?
So I misunderstood, because I thought, I thought it would be something where, Larry, you as the president would, would select the topic like we did for the PE thing. So this is just what's coming through the state and just to keep-
And we're a year behind.
So what have we been doing that we haven't been-
We're a year behind.
Trying to, and speaking some of them in.
What happens is, they pick, it can be a lot of different ways, but John's gonna organize this time, he's gonna either organize it by the oldest quarter first, or he's gonna organize it by topics, set of topics that'll work through, and you could have two or three quarters' worth of updates, all incorporated into one set of topics. And then you hash through them, but it's not the last chance to hash through them. I mean, the thing for me is that I never went to them, because they're, I went to one, like, is it Monday morning, or whatever morning they were. But they come to before the board, generally only as a consent item, then you have to pull them as a consent item if you want to discuss them. But that always gives you the chance on the hot-button topics to discuss at night, even if the board president doesn't think it's a hot-button topic, the board can pull it, when the board members can pull it.
Okay, I understand. So, yeah, I can, I can, my schedule changes, I can make different things work, so I'll let-
How about just Monday mornings? Does everyone like Monday mornings?
Yeah.
Sure. It works.
So is there, let's just take the first five meetings in December. Does anybody have a conflict in any of those Monday mornings? August 11th?
Well, the Monday of the week of the 8th is Labor Day. God bless you back there.
Yeah, you would have to move it to Tuesday, probably, if you wanted it that week.
Or the 14th.
Or the 14th.
You kind of have a weird schedule, board schedule in September anyway, so if you did that one on the 14th, it wouldn't be a big deal.
Can I bring up one issue? When I was board president, we had a lot of very exciting things going on in the district and the community. And I know there were a couple times when we weren't intentionally trying to have the meeting too early, but there were community members that wanted to come, especially parents.
Right.
And they couldn't get over here in time after they dropped their kids off. And so I would just ask, if Monday morning I agree with, but maybe just-
The eight o'clock start time.
Yes, just enough time.
Maybe a nine o'clock start time.
Whatever that may be, I'm just throwing it out there, so I don't want to derail the dates, but.
I know the first one, August 10th, I'm out of town. It doesn't matter, you can still have it, but I'll just put that out there.
There's a time.
Linda, is your mic on?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, the, the first Monday, August 10th, I'm out of town. It doesn't mean you don't have it, but that's the only one I had, I would have that's a conflict.
We're proposing, by the way, the time nine to 11, if that works.
So let me suggest for the first three meetings, if nine to 11 is a timeframe, August 10th, September 14th, so we avoid the Labor Day long weekend, October 12th, and then we would be November, Monday, November 16th, Monday, December 7th. In January, we would be on Monday, January 25th. February would be Monday, February 8th. March would be Monday, March 7th. April would be like January, later in the month, that would be Monday, April 25, 25th. We would then be Monday, May 9. And then in June, we would wait till after school lets out, and we would be Monday, June 20th.
Good luck on that one. Or not, yeah.
Those would be from nine to 11, and if the board is amenable, we can bring back an amended calendar at our next meeting.
Or, since Jenna wrote those all down, could you email, I didn't want to sit here and put them into the phone, you mail them all to us. Something else about the process of that, those policy meetings, especially before we moved into this building, it was much more effective, especially when members of the community wanted to participate, and just more, more effective that it was done in, in the round, maybe even in the community. I don't know whether the community room's going to be available, but just policy meetings with us sitting up here, and if somebody does have an issue, those meetings have a tendency to be much more interactive with members of the community.
We can find the right kind of venue.
Yeah, this is a little stiff.
Is our, next meeting is August 12th, and we're recommending an August 10th date. An alternative suggestion would be to approve the amended calendar this evening?
Yeah.
Yeah, you want, you want to make a motion? Someone want to make a motion?
What's the item? I make a motion that the board approve, approve dates and times as selected, and a location to be determined for board policy workshops during the period August 1st, 2015 through June 30, 2016.
Second? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
You wouldn't necessarily want it in the boardroom, but you, a smaller conference room would work, too. We've used smaller con-
You're just thinking the beach club.
Good.
I think we might-
Well, that's good, we could go out to the gazebo, you know, and just-
I think we might try with the community room, and set that up first, and see how that works as a venue.
All right.
We'll have to get on the list.
Thank you, John.
For the community room?
Small list.
Joanne, is this you?
It is mine.
All right.
So I'd like to invite Michelle Marcus up to join me, as she's preparing our PowerPoint. Jana will be passing out the, the packet for you. And I'd also like to thank Joan Romano for her leadership over the last year and a half in this report card process, and also Andrea McDonald, who made all of the wants and needs and desires of the teachers fit into Ares, into a, into a type of a template. So thank you to Joan and to, and to Andrea. So tonight, the purpose of the, of our presentation tonight is to share with you our new elementary report card, which will be implemented this fall up to the first trimester. And as we transitioned our elementary curriculum to align with the new California standards, we also began the process of developing the new TK through 5 report card, which is aligned to the new grade level expectations for language arts and for math. Now, in the interim, during the 2014-15 school year, we made some modifications to the existing report card, so that our teachers would be able to report on the student progress as they transitioned to the new instructional and assessment practices. So part of your, if you back that up just a little bit, so part of your packet is, number one, you have the PowerPoint that is stapled for you. The second attachment is the report card from, from this year, 14-15, and then the current report, the current report card that will be implemented for 2015-16 is the third attachment. And I will reference all of these as I, as I'm going, as we're going through the presentation. But as you have heard from some of our members of our community, the students were not assessed last year, this is basically not accurate. If you would refer to the landscape copy of the, it's in your packet, of the report card, you can see that our teachers reported each trimester on the overall score for each content area. The mathematics, reading, writing, listening and speaking, history and social studies. The specific standards identified under each content area were graded out, so that the teachers no longer were reporting on the former discrete standards, but rather on standards that were integrated into the new California state standard. So you can see on the old report card that we did assess the students this year. So at this time, I just want to go through the timeline with you. The timeline began back in June of 2014. A report card committee was established. This report card committee consisted of teachers and administrators. They met for five days, reviewing the 13, the 13-14 report card, and then developing a draft of the new report card. And you can just see that it was represented as administrators. We did a board presentation in August, and then we had several parent focus groups, and constantly taking feedback, and constantly going back and, and doing our revisions, and listening to input from our, from our community, and from our teachers, and from our administrators. And then, as you can see, we're doing a presentation this evening, and then our first trimester report card will be sent home in, at the, well, the 19th is the trimester, but we'll be looking at, we'll give you a specific date on when they will be sent home. So at this time, if you take out the, the new report card, that's on, that's on the non-landscape sheet, Michelle Marcus will be walking you through this, so that you can see every element of the new report card, and we can, then I'll open it up for questions. So Michelle, why don't you take them through this process?
Thanks. Good evening. So at the top of the report card, you'll see the key identification information, which is the same on all report cards. It identifies the school district, the grade level, school site, principal, teacher, and student. If you look below the key identification marks, you'll see the explanation of marks. The effort descriptors, C consistently, S some of the time, and AC, area of concern, will be used for both academic effort and for the essential learner behaviors. You can see the essential learner behaviors identified at the top left corner of the report card. These are grade level specific. The achievement level descriptors are the, are the scores that students will be given for each of the focus areas and the content domains. Level four indicates that the student is demonstrate, is demonstrating consistent understanding of grade level standards and expectations. A level three indicates minimal, partial understanding. Level two would indicate minimal understanding, and a level one indicates that there is insufficient evidence to identify an achievement level. These levels are similar to those used on the ESPEC reporting, just as our previous report card used five levels, ranging from below basic to advanced, which were aligned to the previous state reporting system. When looking at the report card sample that you have, you can see that the first content area identified- When looking at the report card sample that you have, you can see that the first content area identified is reading. The achievement level descriptor will be entered each trimester for each focus area of reading. Those focus areas for reading are literature, informational text, and foundational skills. These focus areas are taken directly from the California state standards. Below each focus area are listed the essential grade level specific standards for that area of focus. This will provide parents and students a more detailed description of the year-end grade level expectations for each area of focus. You can also see that students will receive an overall effort grade for each content area. As you reference your report card sample, you'll see this format duplicated for each content area that will be reported on. The next slide will show you what those areas are. We already looked at reading, but you can see on your sample report card, if you look at the front and the back, that language, writing, speaking, and listening, and math will follow the same format. Social studies and science will also receive achievement level descriptors and effort grades. Health, PE, visual and performing arts, and general instrumental music will all receive effort grades. This report card will continue to be revised and updated as the curriculum grows. The next generation science standards and technology are content areas which will become part of the report card as teachers receive professional development training in these areas. Teachers are looking forward to this new report card because it's aligned to what teachers will be teaching and will clearly describe to parents how their children are doing, both academically and behaviorally in the classroom. Teachers are proud and excited about the collaborative work that has been done and are looking forward to implementing the new report card this fall.
Well, thank you, Michelle. We went through that briefly. We have plenty of time for questions, but let me go over the next steps, and then we can go back and reference some questions regarding a report card. But as you can see in our August, at our staff development date, we will be doing our elementary report card and discussing with our teachers the implementation plan. In, beginning in September through December, we are developing a teacher and parent guide that will accompany the report card when it is sent home, that explains all the details of what the parents will be viewing. We will also be having our site-based parent education presentations, and that will be done at each site by our principals and our staff. Then we will also be conducting our site-based elementary staff training. So all the teachers will receive the same training at all 10 elementary schools. And then continuing in 2016, January through June, we will continue the site-based elementary staff training, and then our report card committee will come back and review and evaluate the process, making sure that everybody understands, and we are consistently putting our grading practices in place. So at that time, I gave you an overview of the past and the present and the future, so I'd like to open it up for questions.
I certainly have a question, but anyone can go first.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
In the old report card, we always had something that, it was ranked one through five-
Correct.
-under achievement. And number five was exceeds grade level standard, okay? And-
This is Pallas Verdis.
Yeah.
Put that in there as part of your question.
Oh, my question is this. In the new report card, it never made sense to me that you would be grading kids on whether they're exceeding grade level expectations. And a lot of parents didn't understand it because they were used to A, B, C, and D, and this, that, and the other, and that they thought their students should all get fives, whereas we were told very few students would get fives. They would be the exception. But I can tell you, it caused a little bit of friction in some of those houses because not everyone, not every parent in the district was in on this program here. But now I understand, we're doing away with that, and instead, four is the highest level, and it is consistent understanding and ability to apply grade level standards and expectations. We're not grading students anymore as to whether they're exceeding grade level expectations. We're actually going to grade them on. Which makes so much more sense. I guess it's what I was trying to say. Do I understand it correctly?
Yes, you understand it correctly.
Oh, thank God. Okay.
Did any of that from the old timers entered into the discussion of what fives on the elementary report card did to the fabric of some of our families?
The self-esteem that you destroyed.
I'll let Michelle address that because she sat with the teachers and the administrators, and it was a healthy, vigorous conversation, but all slanted towards eliminating the five and just maintaining the one, two, three, four.
Yes, there was a lot of discussion about that five-
Michelle, bring your mic closer.
I'm sorry, from teachers, parents, and administrators. And it was pretty unanimous that the five was not something that the teachers or parents wanted to see, or administrators, even parents of students who were very bright. And I think that it was, I would say it was welcomed by all teachers to have just the four. We have rubrics that will align to this and will give common language with when a student receives a four, what does that mean? And that's the training we're going to provide for teachers.
And you, to emphasize, you also said that aligns with the way you're doing reporting to the state as well, and the old method aligned to the way that we did the old reporting.
Exactly.
Very similar.
Now, okay. So the understanding of what you'll be able to tell parents is that in the case of our report card, we could develop our own using factors that you found from parents and teachers and what have. We didn't have to download a report card from the State Department of Education.
No, we did not. But as you can see, on the reverse side, what we have done is instead of attaching all of this to the report card, we actually referenced the new common, you know, the new state standards in a link for the parents.
Now, as far as the delivery mechanism for parents, do they get this emailed? Is this something on Ares? What's the deal?
We still print the report card out at the elementary level and-
And give them to the kids?
Send it home and meet with the parents and talk about a copy in front of us, and yes.
And what about at the intermediate and the high school levels? How are those report cards?
There have been no changes at that point. It took us, we went through this process with our elementary process, but there will be, it was very different with our intermediate and high school.
So can I ask you a couple of questions? I'll do one at a time. So on the, I'll go to the bottom end. So on the number, it says one insufficient evidence to identify level. Does that mean they haven't done that area yet? Or does that mean you're so poorly skilled in this area, we can't even tell what you know? Is that what it's, is that what it's saying? I'm trying to, do you know what I'm saying? Like, is that just something, because sometimes there were always things where it just was, it was blank because we just haven't, like, I'll just pick something random, cursive. We haven't done cursive writing yet, so we can't evaluate you on that, so you get a one. Because then parents start freaking out, oh, you got a one.
The one is intended for insufficient evidence for students who come in late, who haven't been there during the instruction. There are, we are told we have to great, give a student a report card as a certain number of days that they've been in your classroom.
Oh, okay. So, and you'll explain that to all the parents?
This will all be explained for every level, every rubric.
And then my next question is, so under, I'll give the, use the writing example. So you're getting one grade for writing, and I guess I wish our fifth grade teacher would have stayed because I could have asked her this. I know it's a lot of work for the teachers to then give a grade for each of those subareas. But if you're getting a grade for writing, whether you write well in cursive or not really has nothing to do with the fact that you produce clear and coherent writing that makes a lot of sense. So teachers might emphasize different things, and parents might not care if their kid can write in cursive, but really want to know they can write well, or vice versa, I guess. But you're only getting one grade for that. Is that just so much work for teachers to then micromanage, microdetail every little thing for every student?
That's a good question. You're actually going to get three different writing achievement level descriptors for text types and purposes, production and distribution of writing, and research to build knowledge.
Okay, so I was just going to the subs.
Okay, just to the, and then what, these standards on here were decided on after teachers looking at all of the California standards and deciding what are the essentials of the essentials. And as we moved away from the state reporting system, where standards were assessed discreetly, teachers really felt strongly that they didn't want to assess things discreetly and check them off, but rather look at them as they're integrated.
Okay, that's what my question was, just with the teachers' interest.
And that will come with the training as well, as well, yes.
So I'm going to, Linda's question was one I was going to ask. So as a parent, if my child receives a two or a three, and we'll use that writing example, I don't know which area my child needs to improve on currently, whereas in the old report card, it pretty clearly stated it. So I'm just trying to figure out how the teacher will be able to communicate to the parent that issue.
Well, that will definitely come with the comments. There's more room on the back for comments, as well as parent conferences. And in the parent handbook, there will be, we're designing rubrics for each content area that will explain. If your child is receiving a level four, these are the things that we're seeing, or a level three. And a lot of that will come with the conferencing and the comments.
It's interesting because as somebody who just finished grading all day today, submitted them by five o'clock, I did, I can see the pros and cons on why I would actually want the standards listed and be able to identify. So I don't have to, I can just get right to that issue if that's the thing. Versus now, under production and distribution of writing, there's five, one, two, three, four bullet points. So it's, I'm just raising it as something that I'm sure will be raised as it gets rolled out and as teachers learn to, one, be able to assess, but also be able to share with the student and the family, kind of, here's where you're at and why. There's some room there.
So like, if you're, if you're wanting to know if your child understands its favorite topic, in my house, fractions, they might be able to add and subtract them perfectly, but they get to multiplication and division, they have no clue. So how would you evaluate their ability overall in fractions? And as a parent, if you're trying to help your child, or as a teacher, you're trying to grade that. But again, like Tony said, I understand the microdetailed effort teachers need to make for that. So that's something, I think if teachers could put that in the comments, that would avoid a lot of phone calls and emails to the teacher about that issue.
That might be a suggestion for a practice. I don't know if you already have it, that if it's not a four, to mention which area it is in the comments section.
Absolutely. And some of the training that we will be doing is not just on how to use the report card, but training and assessment.
Sure. And assessment. And also, that was one recommendation within the teachers. As you can see on the old report card, there were limited spaces for comment, and we have increased that area for comment.
Can I, I have, I want to make sure that we highlight on the calendar, the timeline, that there was a parent focus group in January 215 that looked at this for the folks that don't think we're transparent or include the community. So that's correct?
What was your question, Tony?
It was a comment, just to highlight that there were multiple parent focus groups that looked at this and had input long before it came to this point.
Yes, valuable input, too.
My, I have some future questions, so I don't know. I know, Larry, you said you had a question, and I don't want to move.
Well, I'll go at the end.
You'll go at the end. Okay, so my questions are kind of like you just won the Olympics and you got a gold medal, and I'm going to ask you, so, you know, what about the next Olympics? I am interested in where we're at with district-based assessments in math and English and language arts, knowing that the fact that you've taken this on is a great achievement, but it's coming. And I'm also interested in where we are with the next generation science standards.
I think in looking at, the closest that we came was, were the summative assessments that we did with our math. And we are in the process with our, with Ed Service to look at that with our teachers, of moving forward with site-based assessments. So is that a future goal of ours? Yes, it is. Next generation science standards, once again, when you call the state, you get a different answer-
Sure.
-with whomever you speak with. They keep moving back the date, but it's something that is on our radar. It's probably one of our goals. We actually have one of our teachers in our district that just got elected as the president of the, on the state level, Joe Grace, who's very knowledgeable about the NGSS. And looking, I've met with her and having conversations with her, tapping into her knowledge of where we're going with our, with our next generation science standards. And as Michelle said, that will be reflected on those future report cards, is this is going to morph itself into a, the solid document. But the technology matrix and also the next generation science standards will be part of the new report cards.
So I would just advocate that we move on the great work of the summative assessments that we did in math, and we create at least two formative assessments this year, at least. Might as well. We have the momentum. We know how to do it now. We have a collaborative group that's working really well. And there's no reason why we couldn't get a similar group with ELA. And then for the next generation science standards, I would advocate that we don't wait for anybody to tell us when it's going to be implemented and we get it started, so.
Thank you.
That's my advocacy for the night.
Thank you.
Any else?
The, it would seem, it's been a while since I had children in elementary school. But it would seem to me that the report card, it's something that is a milestone event, but if a parent's been paying attention, there's all other sorts of traditional, you know, a paper comes home, and online options, if I'm not mistaken. Is, I'm more familiar with that, what's been happening in high school, even though, again, it's been a while since I've had high schoolers. But could, could you speak something to the assessments that a parent can be aware of prior to this coming home and they saying, oh, my gosh, Sally can't write?
Well, I am an elementary school parent, and so, you know, elementary school teachers are constantly assessing formatively, sending home papers that are graded. Teachers use rubrics and attach them to the paper. They, teachers tell the students what, how they're doing. The kids are, we're checking for understanding all the time, and we're sending home feedback. In elementary school, it's very much a daily kind of communication. We have portfolios that we keep with student work, which I think will be very helpful when we're using these report cards to show the student work. We call meetings. We call, if students, we see students that are struggling, we have, we send out little interims or notices, and we meet with the parents before this report card even goes home to address any concerns. And elementary teachers have a very open-door policy, and we see the parents every, we have conferences.
Well, that's what led to my confusion. We weren't in a position to discuss with some of the speakers that we've had here who were critical about not having a report card, which we found out was, you know, well, that we knew was inaccurate. But seemed so concerned about lack of a report card as though that was the only snapshot into the progress of their student, when indeed, now that we can talk about this and all those months of pent-up desire to discuss, it's, there's lots of feedback going on. I think even, in a way, more so in K5. Not to diminish what happens in 612, but I'm just saying, there's an awful lot of communication going on as far as how the kids are achieving.
And I think you'll notice that the teachers were very passionate. On the bottom left-hand corner of the report card communicates the student's progress towards grade level academic. They felt it was very important to put that paragraph down here. Andrea worked very hard to make sure that that was inserted onto the report card, so.
Can I echo, this is a much bigger conversation, just the report cards, but it, and it's kind of my push towards why I want to make sure we get some district-based assessments. Because I think teachers do a great job of assessing, but it also helps the district when there's a district-based assessment that we know every student in the district in December has taken the same assessment, and we can look at our rubrics. What I'm thinking about with what Malcolm's saying, I have a daughter who's going from sixth to seventh. So imagine she's in sixth grade. Last year, they checked their grades compulsively. It's probably the most unhealthy thing I've ever seen to watch the kids, I'm sure you guys didn't have this. Our kids check their grades constantly. I mean, I can't imagine-
The ones do that want to see good results, the ones who are in denial, don't really want to check.
I'm not going to address this.
And my children had a monitor to make sure that they're-
So what I'm thinking out loud is it'd be interesting as we move forward with this, one, as we, as this is still paper, and it's helpful, and it's aligned, and it's doing all the right things. There may be a moment where, moving forward, and I'm thinking of Trent's department as well, that maybe there's some way, if they weren't just checking their score, but they actually were somehow, and I don't want to add more to teachers. I want to be able to do it in a way that teachers actually have less kind of grief at the end and managing expectations.
Good job, Lydia.
Thinking about going home.
She didn't even move her lip. Yes. So I'm just wondering if there might be a real exciting moment here, where if we could figure out how to do that- we could figure out how to do that, if every time my daughter was checking to see if her assignment was graded, there was actually a way to actually somehow have feedback or a learning moment there, wow, there might actually be some things happening that aren't just point, grade, percentage-driven. And that's really essentially what those assignments are supposed to be for, but we know, we live in a generation, you know, that's.
So, you know, there was always so much discussion back in the old days, Trent, when you first got here, about aligning report cards to gradebook and all of that sort of stuff. Is that dredging up some old memories for you?
Yeah.
All right. So where, where are we, are, are the teachers going to be double-dipping here? Are they going to have to fill out something? I'm assuming this is going to be generated from data that's going somewhere. They're not filling this out by hand.
This is, this is done electronically through the report card in Ares, through the, the teachers will log in and they enter it. And the report card is also, like mentioned earlier, that it is mailed home. It is online in the parent portal. So if, say, for example, you lose it, you need it for a sports activity, a parent can always go online and print out a draft, or, you know, not an official.
Like a PDF?
Right, of their report card. But in terms of, you know, I think that's another conversation we used to get into, gradebooks. And, because teachers have different, like Michelle said, a variety of tools and assessments they're using to build, to develop the grades and the report cards. So I think there's some additional conversation, that there's some technology tools there, but I think we have to make sure that the gradebooks and the resources have to be, the options have to be in alignment with the report card and what the teacher's needs are.
You know, since, since prep time has been a topic, you know, I want to make sure that, that the prep time that our K-5 teachers have isn't being used so they have to reinvent the wheel, you know, entering grade here and entering grade there. And, you know, and they're not doing their collaborative stuff. They're doing just the menial work of transferring something from one place to another. So, you know, I want the George Jetson model of push the button.
And can, John could speak to that. But contrastually, our K-5 teachers do get a day to do report cards.
Okay.
To remember, too, a lot of that is also to design to, for comments. There's a lot of inputting and writing and evaluating that they're putting into those report cards, besides just entering grades. There's a lot of comments and feedback they're providing to parents.
And those comments are a field that they fill in Ares?
They can enter those in.
Okay.
So when you're referencing the prep time, that's why they're, they're given a complete day to make sure that they're doing their report cards.
Okay. So it doesn't take away from?
Correct.
Sandy, did you get your question asked, answered?
Most of, I'm saying, I've been really impressed with your discussions. Actually, very lively. I've liked, most of the questions that I've had, you have answered through your discussion. It's been great. One of my questions was about the comments section, which you've covered. And basically, from the elementary school level, of those of you who know, there's very little online that we can get. So that was something that, just so you know, but certainly once you get into junior high school. So this, this report card is only going to be at elementary school level. That's correct? Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. So from the, and what you were asking about, where are my child doing previously at the elementary school level, it, it broke it up so that, you know, in reading, there were these eight different sub, subtopics, and in writing, you know, twenty different, or eight different subtopics, and in math, all these different, maybe twelve. And they were all of them, every one of them graded, you know, one through five, or in this case, it would be one through four now. And then it was also rolled up to a total. So in math, you were totally at a four, but all these individual subtopics were also graded. Is it still going to be that way, that each subunit is graded and marked independently? Or do you only get one thing? In math, overall, you're at a four, but each topic is graded individually?
She's asking.
So I'm, what I'm going to do, to answer you.
Would you like me to address? Okay. Thank you.
You're donated?
Mr. Vandenbosch?
Because I, no, I don't have it. And I couldn't really see it from up there, too.
Here's the old one.
Right.
I'll give it to you. Here's the new one, and that answers your question. They, just individuals.
So you, so you do not get individual scores on each one of these anymore?
Right.
Okay. So that will, that will make it a lot harder for a parent, not as much information, but you're trying to compensate for that by having a lot more comments than we had. So the, so the teacher has to write a lot more in, as opposed to grading each school. So it'll be quicker for the teacher to grade, but they have to write more. Can I make one comment, when you're talking about how to have, when feedback for students, specifically on writing, some, when teachers do a good job about, typically, there's a rubric. And so they're trying to be fair. I know they're trying to be fair. They give kids a rubric for what they have to do to score a certain grade, what's expected. And they give kids a rubric, and, and kids will get back then, at the end, their paper. And they get fifty-eight out of sixty, or, you know, whatever, on their, because they scored, you know, on this section, you got twenty out of twenty, on this section, you got, you know, eighteen out of twenty, or whatever. And so overall, you got fifty-eight out of, out of sixty on your paper. But what I never see on a paper anymore are comments. And when I was growing up, my teachers wrote comments on my papers, and this is how I learned to write. Teachers writing just helpful things about, good intro, your organization was weak, or you needed a stronger closing, or something like that. Just, I mean, I'm not talking about a lot. I'm talking two or three sentences that helped you, gave you some, some constructive criticism, something that you did right, and something you needed to work on to get better. I have not seen a paper with a word written on it, on any of my children, for forever. Three kids, one just graduated, one in middle school, one in high school. Nobody writes a comment on a paper anymore. So they don't have anything to grow on. They'll have papers getting produced, getting produced, getting produced. They're working on their fourth paper, but the other two that they've had haven't gotten, even come back yet. So they don't even know how they're doing on them to inform them to do better on their next paper. It doesn't help them to become better writers.
Thank you.
I would, I would just say to that, that in, I agree with some of what Mrs. Valeri is saying. I wouldn't make that generalization totally. The children I know in the district have had wildly varied experiences with how their writing is graded, from grade one through grade eleven. So it really, it really varies, and maybe that can be a point of emphasis you could take back going forward. But it, it does vary, but there are some amazingly great writing teachers, and there's definitely years where their feedback is not there. And it just depends on the teacher's style.
I would just add, as an area for the curriculum department to maybe look into is, as the students, the digital natives, are expecting feedback quicker, and teachers are being expected to be online more, I think there's probably a real legitimate need for a conversation about managing expectations for both the teachers and the parents. So what is a realistic expectation about when I get feedback? What is a realistic expectation about the type of feedback I should get? And going both ways, not saying that anyone's doing it wrong, just that, you know, it didn't used to be like this. And when I started teaching in college, you gave me a paper, and you'll get it when you get it, and that's your grade. The students that have grown up, like our students that have graduated and yours, and gone to college, they, they are online, they're checking those, those grades regularly, they're waiting for them. So the speed at which they're supposed to get feedback and the level, which I think is probably a real legitimate conversation. And if everybody was on the same page, then it discourages and/or prevents disappointment going either way.
Should have sent them to my old law school. Sometimes you get one test, you got it graded six to nine months after you took the test. Never really knew how you did, but then you didn't care after a while, anyway. Okay, so to wrap it up, I just want to compliment the group. This is another example of a team-led effort where you've taken a measured, thoughtful approach to the issue, got a whole group of people involved that were the experts in the area, you got diverse set of opinions, you didn't rush in anything, we didn't jump off the cliff when we're getting complaints about stuff that we couldn't really comment about. We waited until we had the work finished. Obviously, the work is a work in progress, but to the point where it could present it. And I want to just say that I hope that all the rest of our stuff continues, all the other projects continue this way, because this is the really, a very good model of the way things should go as a, both as a leader and as the group. And so I thank you for that. I am a little concerned, I don't think I would have passed fifth grade, because I can't recurse it. And I gave Sandy my report card, but was there something on there about procrastination? No, you can keep, you can keep it. Because, because if there's procrastination on there, hearing Tony's comment about he just finished his grading by the six o'clock deadline, you, you may not have passed fifth grade either.
Makes productive use of class time.
Ah, there you go.
I do have one more question. Does this look very different for TK as opposed to five? Is there less stuff or more stuff, or?
You know, they're all very similar, the same domain, same content areas, but the, foundational skills, for instance, in kindergarten, in reading, are going to be greater than they are in fifth grade.
Okay.
So there's some variation.
And these are all taken out of the new com-
Straight from the standards.
State standards.
State standards.
At each level.
Okay.
Thanks, Joan. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to just thank our team. We have a good, working team down there.
Very good. All right. District enrollment. New topic.
I'll kick us off here. Again, I wildly misjudged how much time we were going to spend on that topic. So I told you about five or 10 minutes. It's about a half hour ago. So good job to the team and great discussion. That makes us all smarter. I'm going to turn the next part over to Trent Otter, saying to talk to us about district, district enrollment. And what I'd like to also ask the board is to stop us along the way, because there are some areas that kind of break out naturally for discussion. So if you, if, if something is, if you have a burning question, please just stop us and ask. And I'm going to carry a couple of the slides, otherwise Trent's going to walk us through the presentation. So Trent, all yours.
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Austin. While Jana's passing is out, I do want to thank some of the staff that is here tonight. As you know, Jana does double duty in the enrollment center in the day. Andrea McDonald's here tonight, and also Lauren Sees. I just want to thank them for, they do all the heavy lifting in terms of processing our new, new families as they enroll to the district. So what I want to do this evening is talk a little bit about histories, trends, policy, and programs of enrollment. And I want to first start out by saying that enrollment is kind of like a giant puzzle for us, in terms of placement of students, getting people processed. There's a lot of moving parts, and it's constantly fluid. So as we look at the, I want to start out by talking about some of the variables and factors that impact our enrollment. And the first one is always jobs in the economy. When we think about how our numbers fluctuate, and we look at the last few years, we've lost Nissan, which has moved out of the area, Toyota's in the process of moving out of the area. The economy has had a little bit of a roller coaster. That does play a role in, in sometimes our enrollment numbers. The housing market, this is, you know, the peninsula is, you know, expensive area to live for a lot of families. We've heard from recently that families moving in are now even having a tough time finding places to rent and lease. So it seems like there's a little more of a premium on those types of properties. So some of the feedback we get from our, our new families coming in. Private schools are also in the conversation consistently, in terms of being able to, we, we review that every year and talk about some of our strategies when we try to recruit and attract families. And then finally, the residency. As, as we all know, the, the policies, which I'll talk about a little bit further in the presentation, that residency requirements, we are very, we adhere to those pretty, you know, on a regular basis. And also, in some cases, where I think people, other districts have different challenges than we do. So moving on, what I'd like to do is talk a little bit also about some of the, how enrollment impacts us as an, as an overall, as an organization. So first of all, there's several areas I want to talk about is, is facilities. The number of students in, will always impact our facilities. I'll talk a little bit later about the, the actual numbers of our high we've had for the last 50 years and our low. So you can see, as we've opened schools, while we've closed schools, that does play a role. The budget, all of our funding is very dependent on amount of attendance and ADA we collect, number of students we have in our district. And just for a point of reference, the average LCFF per ADA is $7,485 per student. In terms of staffing, we work very close with Dr. Boz and his staff to make sure that we are staffing adequately, that we are addressing the number of sections we need at the secondary level. We have, we're meeting our class size requirements at the elementary level. And which, and in terms of class size, our enrollment, this does have a, you know, impact on things such as combination classes, sticking to the requirements for our 24 to one at TK through three, also our class size averages across the district. And then the last thing I want to point out is that the enrollment also impacts the amount and number of programs that we offer in terms of some of our academics and extracurriculars. The economy of scale sometimes does play a role when we have a higher number of students that can participate in specific programs. So let's talk a little bit about the history of our enrollment. And what I've put together for you tonight is, is looking at the last six years. So looking at the chart, traditionally, we, we talk about, you know, kind of a snapshot, our district trends around slightly under 12,000 students, 11,008, 11,009, down 11, 11,6 recently. So going back to 2009 on the chart, you can see we, we had about 11,840 students. And then each year, you'll see the difference from the previous. So in 1011, we, we grew 60 students. 1112, we dropped 97. We grew 26 the following. And kind of the most significant difference is back in 2013, 14, when, when the decline was 159 students over the previous year. So looking back to 2009, 10, we're down a little over 200 students. In comparison to looking back at data from the last 50 years, our high for the district was 17,836 back in 1973, '74. And our lowest enrollment was in 61, '62, we had 8,000 students. So you can see, over that 50 years, there's a, there's a tremendous swing in terms of total number of enrollment. However, looking at the, at a six-year window, a, we've had a difference of 200 students kind of from, from 2009 to 2014, '15.
You know, before you go.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Go ahead, you can.
Sure.
We used to have something in the budget. We used to have a page in the budget that had the enrollment from the beginning of time, such as you've given us the beginning and, and the end point. But all I can tell you is, when you say the lowest enrollment was 8,089 in 1961, '62, when I came onto the board in, a long time ago, in December of '97, our enrollment was approximately 9,000 students.
Yeah, right around the, when the, the nineties.
So you need to understand how much, I mean, we can, we can, yes, we have declining enrollment. You have to understand, the enrollment has grown dramatically since December of 1997. And at one point, if, I don't have the chart in front of me, but if I had the budget with me, one of the old budgets, it would be there, you would see that we almost hit 12,000. But we've really grown a lot in a short period of time, and that's what led us to do the modernization program and everything. And, and the other thing, and I, I look through here, and you, and you don't have it, you have to look at your, at your grade levels. You have to disaggregate the data, and you, and you know that, Trent, better than I do, that you have to disaggregate the data every year and determine whether there are, in fact, classes that are coming in low at kindergarten, because kindergarten's your key, your key grade level. Because what you have in kindergarten is going to move through for 13 years.
And in fact, that's what you see on this thing, a very slow erosion.
Yes. And so my, my question is, without having that information, you can't determine whether it, there is, part of it is, one year, you just had a low class. And if you have a low class, that, or you could have two low classes. They will go through the system for 13 years, and it's going to affect you.
Right.
You know, so I, it's, it's a nice snapshot, but it's really kind of useless in terms of actually doing anything with it, I guess.
Yeah, going back, and you're right, I, I do have the chart, and it's very, very small print, and I can share this with you or email this to you. But you're right, going back, if you look to, you know, I think you said '97.
Yeah, December '97.
Thank you.
About 9,000.
Yeah, we were consistently in the 9,000 range, 8,000, 9,000, 8,000. And then we saw more of a significant growth in '98, '99. We jumped, started into 10,000, 10,5, 10,9, 11,2. And we did hit 12,000 students in 2005, 2006.
Of course, the significant factor in '99, 2000 was-
Of course, the significant factor in '99, 2000 was the admission of the Eastview students. That brought in about 1,000 kids.
1,500 approximately. You know, so yeah, we brought, we brought kids in from-
Right, and so I think part of the reason for the snapshot too is to say, I think there is always some concern that people think that we have a sudden turn on the dime, that students or families are leaving the district. But I think as you pointed out, Barbara, that we have, over the long haul, going back to the last 15, 20 years, we have been growing, and our change is really over the last six years, is we're of decline of 200 students. And we do look at, like, the most important part is those kindergarten students, because we are going to keep them. And that's been, we've put a lot of effort into focusing on reaching out to our preschool programs, some of the private preschools, we have, you know, the early childhood program. We feel confidently that if we can get them into our system, they're going to stay from the pre-K all the way through.
But the challenge still is that you're, if you take the entire difference in enrollment of 234 students, 229 of them are in the kindergarten to fifth grade. And every year you look at the kindergarten number gets a little smaller, a little smaller, a little, it's like death by a thousand little tiny paper cuts. And when you, it doesn't sound significant when you go from 4,700 to 4,500, but if you look at the trend, it's significant. And when you look at how many of those kids are at, how many different sites, you know, you're putting 4,700 at 10 sites or whatever, 4,400 at 10 sites. At some point, you make the sites make it difficult. If you get down to one kindergarten class or one first grade class at a site, you make the site really a lot less viable, even if you're very lean about how you staff the site. The other thing is that you look at where you stayed basically steady, it's in the high school students. And until last year, we never really got much additional money for the cost of educating a high school student, which is tremendously more expensive than educating an elementary school student. So both those things work hard, have worked against the budget, were some of the things that were really struggling the last five or six years, even though the numbers don't look all that big. And, you know, I think this goes back to about the first or second years on the board, we actually had a demographic study done about where people coming from and what, and we never really used that information to get very far, because we ended up-
It's not useful.
It was-
It wasn't very helpful, number one. Number two, we then had 1,000 budget cuts, so we weren't going to institute any programs that were going to make any difference to it anyway. But it is something that, you know, five years from now could be a big issue, and it's something we always need to keep in the back of our mind from a budgeting perspective.
But in terms, in a perfect world, if you wanted to do something about making up those 200 students, you would focus on kindergarten, kindergarten, kindergartens, whatever you could do to get TK and kindergarten in here. And I know you can do, what, TK at?
Yeah, I want to talk about the-
Okay, you're going to talk about that.
Sure.
Okay, let's go ahead. We've beaten that one to death.
Okay. So looking at, looking at our current year and our 15, 16 projections, what we, what we put together here on this chart is where are we from point to point? So we look at, if we took it July of this year of 2000, compared 15 to 14, how are we tracking? Now, there's a lot of time, but there's still a lot of movement between now and the start of school. So if you look at, for example, the TK through five, last year in July, we're actually up 34 students. Where we were in August was we were at 4,500, so we still are about a little over 100, about 115 students that we hope to enroll before the start of school.
But again, this is just a snapshot in time.
Right, so snapshot in time, if we were down something, you know, significantly, then I think that would be a little more cause for alarm. What's interesting, I think, and going back to what you said earlier, Barbara, was that sometimes you have a bubble class. We had a bubble class last year in eighth grade. And so now you see that in sixth through eight, we're down 111 students. So, you know, we anticipate that, you know, we will pick up some students, but, you know, it's a little bit of a moving target. Our high school has stayed, like Larry pointed out, pretty consistent in terms of what we're tracking. And looking at where we were last August, it's important to point out, last year in August, we had enrollment for 11,708 students. But when you look at what our enrollment was for last year, it was 11,600. And that's due to things like people, you know, we count students in seats, bodies in seats on the first day. So even though we may have a projection to say that we have, you know, 11,800 students coming, enrolled, we have people that don't, that leave the district. There's no requirement to notify us that I'm moving out of the area, or I'm not coming, or I chose to go to private school. So that's why we explain to families who are trying to get to specific schools, there's a lot of movement that may still happen for placement. So let's talk a little bit about programs that impact enrollment. And what I'm going to do is go through, I'm going to list them, and then I'll go through each one of them individually. The first two items are programs that currently are operating in the district. Enrollment based on parent employment, which is commonly referred to as the Allen Bill, transitional kindergarten program. What Dr. Austin will talk about a little bit more in a minute is the Assembly Bill 306, the impact of online learning, especially how it impacts the secondary level, inter-district permits, and the program improvement school of choice. Again, these are just programs and options that some districts in California are using, and I'll talk a little bit of how they play a role and what, and what's, what they mean. So in terms of employment based on parent, enrollment based on parent employment, the Allen Bill, this is kind of a, again, a snapshot to tell you how we have done the past five years in terms of the numbers. So we've had a increase over the past five years of about 285 students overall across the district. And a lot of times, we get a lot of questions about how many of those families are employees, how many of them are actually employed by local businesses. Below that, you can see that we've stayed pretty much consistent in terms of the numbers, a very slight increase of the, you know, district employees versus a little more significant increase in the employed by local businesses.
Just to highlight, eight years ago, the number in the first column was one, employed by local businesses. The first year we did the Allen Bill, changes. We were so concerned about making sure that we did it the right way, we had one Allen Bill student, not counting the employees. And you see the change, and you, if you subtract out the 600, I mean, it's great to see more kids from the employees, but you subtract out the 609 students.
That's a significant-
It's a significant change to the district.
Right. California Assembly Bill 306, this is sponsored by local assemblyman David Hadley, and I'm going to toss this over to Dr. Austin so he can share some information.
Just give you a quick summary of this. David Hadley's been excellent about meaning communication about this. Once we got off to a little bit of a rocky start, he's been really good about working with us, keep us in the loop, even taking some of our suggestions that have led to revisions in the original bill. AB 306, I'm going to talk about what it is in its purest form, allows families of active military who live on military housing to be able to request a transfer to another district without the home district having the ability to veto that or to hold them in that district. That's all it says. There's no obligation for any other district to accept students, it just says that the releasing district has to release. Why does that matter to us? Well, we have military housing close to us in San Pedro. It's something worth a future discussion, it's not twice something we're going to solve here tonight, nor are we even asking. It's worth discussion to see if we would like to entertain the thought of accepting military housing students into our district in the future. We're talking a year away. And if it's something that you would like us to start working on, bringing some drafts, what would it look like? We can start doing that. Assembly Bill 306 is making its way through pretty untouched at this point, so you have every reason to believe that that's going to make it all the way through, so.
I would ask, is there a way to find out how many kids that might mean for the district, or is that just such a vague number?
It's hard, and I've asked that question. While, while it has a local feel to it, it is, it's truly a statewide bill, of course. And I've had numbers so all over the place that I don't trust any of them. So we don't, we do not know the number of military families that could make it here, sorry, could make it here easily. And then, of course, we don't know how many would opt to come here. We'd like to think all of them would, but-
And Linda, when this topic came up about 10, 10 years ago-
I was on the board when we, when the military, you were here too, wasn't it?
Yeah.
No, you weren't, you weren't.
In 206.
Oh, it came up earlier. It was Ian Hunter and-
Well, but in 2006, when there, when there was a push by, actually, the city of Rancho Palos Verdes was involved with that, kind of, we found out about it in the 11th hour. But I asked that same question about, you know, how many? And it really, you know, the way military assignments are, it's, you know, these students may not, we might get 100 this year, but then 50 of them are going to be in Okinawa the next year, so it's, it's fluid at best.
But for all intents and purposes, whether it's one or it's 500, it's still, one, we may not have a choice. If the bill passes and students say they want to attend our district, that's going to be an interesting conversation.
That would not grant them access to our district. We still have local control. All it would mean is that in this particular case, Los Angeles would not be able to restrict them from leaving.
Okay, but we want to be, I would think, in the running for them to consider coming here. So I fully endorse any investigation, pros and cons, benefits, things we need to be aware of when we're working with a certain type of student population that we maybe aren't used to, all the above. So I fully endorse further investigation and coming back to us with as much information.
I can tell you that back in about 2002, 2003, we dealt directly with the military and didn't go through RPV. And they were very much interested in the, in our district in particular. And at the time, again, these were estimates, it was between 200 and 300 kids, they thought, at a max. And since the military, since the assignments are only three years at a time, the students would come in for three years at a max and then leave, and then it would be kind of like a pitcher constantly filling and refilling. But there was a great deal of interest, particularly with the Air Force Base in El Segundo and the housing being in San Pedro, they really wanted their students in our district. And at that time, we didn't pursue it. And, you know, we would have to, we could pursue it, but we also, I think, have to check with the military and see if they're really interested. Certainly David Hadley's bill would be very instrumental in helping that happen, and I-
The military is definitely interested. In fact, they've been backers of this bill all the way through. So they're in. So what I'm hearing is to pursue some options.
Just to see, you know, what the options are out there.
Absolutely.
You know, back then, we did talk about special legislation, and David Hadley already has a bill going through, so I just think it's kind of the right thing to do.
Okay, and we do have a contact with the Department of Defense. There's a, some, we've been, there's, someone has reached out to us about questions about military families that are moving, so it will be a nice opportunity for us to pursue that with them. The other, the other piece that we need to, you know, point out is that the online learning is having an impact on our secondary students. And just a couple of data points I want to share with you, and then Dr. Austin will also comment on this. To give you a point of reference, 545 online courses that students took in 2014 at Pacific Coast High School in Orange County, which is run by the Orange County Department of Ed. And we were, $233,000 was the amount that PvPUSD was invoiced to reimburse Pacific Coast High School for those classes in 2014. So it gives you a point of reference to see that the online community in terms of learning and classes for our students is really shifting and changing landscape a little bit.
You know, I don't know if you've been watching TV, but there's some K-12 online learning program that's getting advertised free for parents. And I don't think it's homeschooling, I don't know what it is, but anyway, it's a whole K-12 curriculum of some sort that's, they're advertising very heavily now.
The reason we included this slide is because there would be an assumption that this service is free, but in reality, it's costing us a quarter million dollars. And I really want to point out, spend a second on this, these are numbers from last year. This year's numbers will be worse. We will have more, more classes completed, we will have a bigger bill. We just won't get that until after the classes are completed and then we receive that bill. So there's two topics here. One is can we close down authorization for students to take these courses? Yes, we can. Didn't make sense to do it this year because we don't have an internal alternative for them that makes sense. This is, this, this online learning, the only reason the slide's on here for tonight, just to, just a plant of thought, quarter million dollars, and next year will be bigger. 545 classes that we did not control, the quality control piece of that. We have no, we have no control over the quality of those programs. But we like to think that in the second highest rated school district in the state of California, we could probably outperform Orange County Department Office of Education. All right, so this has a lot of layers to it, but what I am suggesting is, and I, we're doing the prep work right now to start bringing options and thoughts to the board, we need to get into the online world. We need to get in that world so that we can control it, because our kids are doing it anyway. And we're paying people to do a poor job of doing it for us.
And isn't it just like an office of education to turn around and charge you for the services they provide?
More than it would cost us to do it internally.
So I first heard of this issue when a teacher, actually, when teacher, each of the peninsula and PV High explained to me, and I didn't understand this, that it's lost classes for them during the school year. So especially our social studies and science teachers at the high school level are the most affected by this, because kids, and most of them are doing it for the right reason. They want to take, you know, economics and government in the summer so that they can take AP physics and AP computer science or whatever. There, a lot of them are doing it for the right reason, or they want to take science so that they can do music and play a sport. But our teachers, at least the ones I talked to, were very understanding that kids need to do that, they just want to be able to do it themselves, both for the quality of the education and to keep their classes. And there, at least these two guys were, said, you know, I'll do it in the summer, do it as a zero period, maybe come in once a month and do it, however it works out, or maybe some combination of all this stuff. But when you look at the dollar amount, and then you think about the classes that are lost for our teachers, I know that's something that they're concerned about, and the fact that kids are obviously probably not learning a whole lot of economics or government or chemistry from Pacific Coast Highway High School, or whatever it's called.
So taking that, taking that extrapolating a little bit, you have, you take a class in high school in your first semester and your second semester, an average student takes five or six classes, just assume it's five, they take 10 during the year. You're talking about 55 kids, full-time kids, who took classes online. Now, there, some could be over the summer or whatever, but we don't, we staff, we make a schedule out, we don't, we assume those 55 kids are butts in seats. So it's not like we're saying, oh, well, we don't have to pay for these 55 kids, and that way, that way with 55 kids, it's two, it's two, two teachers, $175,000. We're paying the $175,000 and we're paying the $233,000. This makes zero sense to me.
Exactly.
Zero sense. So either we need to get, either we need to get on it quickly, or we need to cut off our kids' ability to do it, if that makes sense, or something, because it's, this is not, I mean, I wouldn't be draconian, cut it off, but-
Well, that was going to be my follow-on. Are there districts who, who say, hey, listen, this is, this is a quality control, you're getting diploma from the PvPUSD, not from Pacific Coast High School with, you know, it's like, you know, a home run average, but with an asterisk, because, you know, you only played in Little League parks. I mean-
Okay, so to use your analogy, you juiced up your batting average, steroids.
Exactly, what happened. And, and we had a discussion, we, we had both principals sitting in here, Charles and Mitzi, it was like a couple of years ago, and we were going through this checklist form that, do you remember that, Trent? You know, that there was this whole process that kids were going to have, it's kind of like our PE exemption, you have to do this and this and this. And they, both camps just couldn't come to an agreement and, and it just didn't fly. With the- the understanding that we needed to control the quality of our product.
I think...
You know, there's some other legislation moving through that has to do with concurrent enrollment for community colleges for high school students. And in the past, that was, the high schools had control over it because they had to be released from the high school to go take the class during the school year. But I don't know what this new legislation going through, if they're going to loosen that up too, you know? Anyway, it's just something to put on your...
The general rule right now is that everything tied to online education is getting looser, not tighter. Now, the problem with that is, as they get looser, we're going to lose more and more kids. So our thought is, instead of legislating our way out of kids leaving, which would just mean shut it down, that between now and the summer, we build something so good that there's not a reason to leave. And, you know, these guys laughed at me a little bit, but I looked at the bottom and said, okay, well, we're paying someone else quarter million dollars to take our kids, why don't we build something so good, we'll take other people's kids and make money? Okay? Really not even joking. So we have potential to do some things here, and nice part is, Orange County standards, we're way behind in the online world. Orange County has it pretty dialed out. South Bay does not. So we are, we're still in great shape in the South Bay, but that's not going to be true forever. These other districts are going to start looking at these same scenarios and solving them, so I think we can solve it first and better. Trent?
Can I ask a quick question before you, Trent, you go back real quick?
Sure.
Dawn had spoken to you earlier today about this issue of, is there any correlation between the online learning?
Unfortunately, there is.
Do you see it?
Yeah.
So there's approval of a letter of agreement for students transferring to community school programs for Orange County Office of Education in our, help me out, consent items?
Yes.
And Pacific Coast High School is one of those. So I don't know if we...
Does not mean that we can't refuse to sign off on those. That agreement covers more than just that piece of it.
Why don't I do this? I'm going to pull it later, and then you can address it.
That's a better idea. Thank you.
We talked a little bit earlier about transitional kindergarten. Going back a little bit in time, probably seven, eight years ago, we had what was called developmental kindergarten. And at the time, we had two or three schools, two or three programs that were spread throughout the peninsula that students would attend. Fortunately, we've been able to grow the transitional kindergarten program to now where we have it at nine campuses, all elementary schools except for Cornerstone. We are, we have scheduled for nine programs again this year. And something that is available to districts is something called Expanded TK, where districts can choose to serve more students by expanding their TK programs to enroll four-year-olds at the start of the school year, even if they turn five after the cutoff date. So this would be something that we'd have to take some time to gear up. If we want to look, for example, next year, we'd look at things like facilities, you know, we'd have to talk about the curriculum, whether you, you know, how you're mixing four and five-year-olds, and those types of instructional issues as well as the facilities. But it is an option that we could explore in terms of, you know, trying to build that transitional kindergarten.
Have you done a cost-benefit analysis? I mean, my son is graduating from Vila, I know, exciting moment.
Graduated?
Yes. Oh, it was a graduation, right, Joanne? We were there. I spoke at the graduat, no.
Promoted.
Promoted.
Tony bought him a car.
No, he had a hat, right? No gown, but a hat. Anyhow, I just wonder, and I should know this, but I don't, what the cost-benefit analysis is versus having a student in our own Sunrise program or at Vila versus...
And there's, there's a lot of students that are right on those borderline of cutoff dates, and so I think that those families, you know, that would be interested, instead of going to private or going to something else, this might be an opportunity to look at, you know, to provide some of those kids and get them into our system earlier and keep them in kindergarten, you know, build those kindergarten numbers. So that is something, you know, just want to point out, that is an option we can look into.
Sure. It might also be interesting, when you bring it back, to bring us some data that show exactly kind of what we invested to get Valmonte up to speed, and over the years, how much money we've gained as an enterprise from having that, just to have it in the, in the conversation.
You know, anything you can do to get those kids into our programs, into the regular program, into the regular program, as early as possible, and if it's, and if it's TK, I mean, honestly, I think you've got to do it. And there'd probably be a lot of parents that would be very happy to do that and not have to pay for preschool, because they would get a free, they would have a free year. And again, that's where the cost-benefit analysis is going to come into play, but the end of the day, you're going to have to ask yourself, does the dog wag the tail or does the tail wag the dog? And is the preschool going to wag the district, or is TK for students going to, is the dog wagging the tail going to win out? It's an interesting question.
In regard to inter-district transfers, we currently, the district does not currently accept inter-district transfer students. And that's, that's a larger discussion, but I do want to just bring you some, you know, data points, some point of reference. Surrounding districts in the South Bay that do accept transfers, Manhattan Beach, Torrance, Redondo, and El Segundo. And just to kind of give you an idea, I know an issue that always comes up a lot is, is, you know, we have a parcel tax, we have, you know, very active community concerns too. We often look at districts that have similar demographics, socioeconomic makeup, and these are just a few examples of other districts that do have a parcel tax like we do, and also have a permit or inter-district transfer program, San Marino, Palo Alto, La Cañada, and Santa Monica, Malibu. So just to kind of give you some perspective there.
Get some numbers next time.
Sure.
The starting point was this, with this really was when we got, I got asked, when I asked Dawn about it regarding the build-out of the homes over on the Rolling Hills Country Club property, the Chandler property, because this is exactly what they're asking for. And naively, I thought we allowed it, and found out we didn't. So then I asked who else does it, and everyone but us, kind of, but, I mean, there's reasons why we didn't do it, but maybe now is the time for the board to consider.
Well, that was going to be a question I was going to ask, because I guess you've answered the question. Are all the homes going to be outside of the district, or are some of the homes going to be in the district and some are going to be out?
About, about 14, no, I think I was wrong. Two-thirds of the houses are within the district. One-third of the houses are outside of the district, and three houses are in LA Unified.
And that is now going to become our problem.
I actually...
It will become our problem because they didn't take care of it when the developer dealt with all this. But it's, it's very, actually very complicated with transferring school district properties.
I'm going to add to that also, I've met with the city managers today, because there's an article in the newspaper that made it sound like they had switched the location of the golf course with homes, which would have solved the problem.
Yeah.
That didn't happen. So, so that's, that's exactly what we read in the newspaper, but I asked the city manager today, said that would have been a massive undertaking, that didn't happen. So it's exactly the breakdown. Larry had says 20-something homes go to Torrance, 70-something are ours, and three are Los Angeles. So unless we do something here as a district, then that is, first, it's complicated.
Those people are going to pay millions, a million plus, maybe two million, I don't know, for those homes.
For two-plus.
And they're going to expect to be going to school in our district, and they're going to be down here in the boardroom. We went through this with Eastview.
Well, a pox on them for not checking that out before they made the loan.
Well, but it's all, that's all true, it's true. But I mean, it also is, in reality, this is really part of our community, and so do we want to turn a blind eye to it or not at some point. I mean, it's, it's not a decision that's going to be made tonight, and it's not a huge number of kids we're talking about. And the reason we didn't do it before was we said, we're not going to spend the money to go through the adjustments you have to do with the county commission and everything else. The cities had to go through doing all that, and we said we refused to do it. And those are the right decision by us. Why spend all that money? We have the ability to do it other ways, and this is just another way of doing it if we choose to do it. It's just whether it opens the door to all sorts of other stuff, that I don't know.
Well, it's, it's going to be on our doorstep as soon as those houses get built.
You got about three years.
So we're going to have to deal with it.
Okay. The final piece in terms of, is something that, it's out there, but school choice program is that districts that have a school identified for program improvement can make a request to other districts to allow students to enroll. So for example, we have received a letter from a surrounding district that has students in a PI school program improvement, and they have requested to, they're inquiring whether we would want to accept their students. We did some research with the County Office of Ed, and basically, that's up to the individual districts if we want to enter into agreement with them. So if a surrounding district said, would Palos Verdes accept our students that are in PI, we would, could say, sure, let's enter into agreement, or we're not interested. But it is something that is available, and some districts do, in other areas, do accept those students, because that's one way that they can boost their enrollment. But I just want to put that on the table, that, in case you hear about, that is something that's, that is available.
We're going to hear, well, you're going to get lots of letters like that, because we get them every year. And this is, this is the fallout from No Child Left Behind, and with those school districts that have schools that are identified as failing, you know, on behalf of their students, they send these letters out. And, you know, in Congress, they're reworking No Child Left Behind, hopefully they'll just get rid of the, the whole thing to begin with, because it's, it's an awful, awful bill.
They're not going to do that, they're going to compromise between either the Senate-passed version or the House-passed version. It'll just be the lesser of two evils, basically.
But, but at the end of the day, I mean, we've been getting these things for years, and we, we haven't done anything with them. So, you know, something to look at, but not, something to look at.
So, any questions?
Just on that particular item, just to clarify, it does not require board action or direction to respond to these PI districts, so I'm responding on our behalf, declining to accept those, those students. So I think that's consistent with past practice. Unless I hear different, I will be doing that on our behalf.
Do you know whether that's the, Trent showed those other districts in our area that accept inter-district transfers, do you know whether the PI transfers they accept? Do you know?
I don't know that, I don't know that answer.
We could, we could look into that. I'm guessing they reached out to Torrance and El Segundo also. Like, for example, the district Hawthorne inquired, so I'm sure that they're inquiring to all their district, all the surrounding South Bay. We could find out.
We can find out for you.
I'm, just be curious.
You know, when, there's, there are a couple of other things that we need to do too, as we look at all these other options. We also have to look internally and make sure we're doing everything internally to reach out to parents who move into the district. And, and one of the things that, that needs to be done is, when all the schools, when the schools shut for the summer, we've got to make sure there's a phone message on there when someone who's just moved into the district calls the school, and there's no message giving them direction as to where to go for enrollment. It's been a problem for many years. Some schools just shut down, and they shut down, and that's it. And they, there's no message there, you know? So in the meantime, while they're looking to find out where to go and enroll, they may wander into a private school and get their children enrolled there because it's fast, quick, and convenient. And then there are some other things, some creative things that other school districts are doing that I'm not going to go into right here, but they have some interesting rules for allowing students into the district. Beverly Hills, for one, has a very creative...
Well, they did. Till they became, what did they become when they...
Basic Aid.
Basic Aid, thank you, yeah. And all those permitted kids who had been in the district, K through 8, who were there on a permit because their parents graduated from Beverly Hills High, were told, see you later.
Yeah, well, we're not Basic Aid, are we?
Yeah.
And then, and there's some other things we could, there's some other things we could do internally. And the other thing is, the houses that Larry was talking about, I think the newspaper said there's going to be about 141 new houses coming online. In addition, you've got, I saw the ad in the paper, these are basically townhomes, but they're on high ridge.
Yeah.
They're at an entry level for this area of 700,000, 700,000. And, you know, the problem is, there isn't a lot of inventory out there, and nothing is reasonably priced anymore, you know? So part of the problem is, people can't afford to move in here. And then there are two other, I think, housing areas. One is the Butcher property, that's on the other side of the Rolling Hills Country Club.
Most of those have been built, actually. There's 14 lots there.
Yeah, well, they're ranch-style homes, hopefully they have kids. And then, amazingly enough, I can see that Trump, of all places, looks like he's building some of those houses now, after all this time, so I don't know, maybe someone's...
He's building a house for John McCain.
But anyway, these are all, these are all potential...
No, for Lindsey Graham, but Lindsey Graham was going to call him, but he destroyed his cellphone on YouTube today.
That's right.
That's, I digress.
Me too.
But anyway, the point is, you do have, we haven't had new housing in this community in a long time. So you do have these housing units, and if people are moving up, maybe they'll be vacating an apartment here or a cheaper house that someone else can move into. So these are just all things that are going on out there.
Sandy, did you want to add one final thought?
Thank you for letting me speak. I had a couple comments regarding the, your discussion regarding, regarding the online learning. I think you have to be really careful, if you had somebody who came here from Pacific Coast Highway, Pacific Coast High School down in Orange County, and they'd spent three years in that high school, and they transferred here for their senior year, and they finished here in their last year and did really well, they would get a diploma from our school, and we wouldn't say you didn't earn a diploma because you were three years in some other crappy high school, so you aren't Palos Verdes, you know, quality. So I think we have to be really careful. If our kids take approximately 48 semesters of high school work in our high school, and then they take one semester online from some other high school, doesn't mean they didn't earn a Palos Verdes diploma, and that they aren't worthy of a high school diploma from us. So I think you have to be a little worthy, a little careful about how you say things. I do think Dr. Austin is right. The best thing for us to do is to try to save that money, and by putting together our own product, and keep that money inside. I think he's, he's got the right approach there. But I don't see that that really satisfies and solves the problem of enrollment issue. I think our biggest problem is the fact that, as you said, we keep our enrollment steady at the high school, so the kids are here. The kids are here, or else we wouldn't have steady enrollment at the high school. But where are they in their infancy? Where are they in elementary school? Where the kids are, their parents are sending them to some of their other private schools. So we've got to get them out of the private schools and into our elementary schools. This is the link we're missing, and this is what we have to focus on. We have to be out there actively recruiting and getting these kids. We have to find some way to advertise and get these kids in. What are we doing? I remember when my kids were in preschool, we actually had some days where the, where the schools, where the preschool, the, 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 these fancy private schools came and talked to the parents and said, well, come to our private school, because we do this and we do that and we do the other thing. And they were recruiting for the private schools. Where was the public school? Why weren't the public school principals coming in saying, come to our T-school, come to our TK program, or come to our kindergarten program? We are, we are the local school district, come to us, this is what we'll give you for free. And instead of paying these high school, these high prices for pub, for private school, you can be bankrolling that money and saving it for your kids' college education, which you'll get into, because you'll be going to the best public, you know, district high school in the country. This is what we need to be doing. Why are we not out there actively recruiting and getting these kids in early? I think that's where we need to focus. We got to get out there and do it somehow. I, I don't know exactly how we put that together, but the kids are there, they're here, or we wouldn't keep an average high school enrollment like we have. What can we do to get them in here earlier?
Thank you. We've been looking forward to this for months.
Well, we just shrunk it down to two minutes.
Yeah. Two months and two minutes. Are you ready? Come on up, Chris.
Chris thought the long hours in the weekend were tough.
Tonight, Chris and I, we're going to give you an overview of the use of facilities, implementation in the first year, which was effective July 1, 2014. And just a little background information, our board approved the new board policy in AR 1330 on May 22, 2014. It did become effective July 1. The final product... The final product was a result of...
This is the Civic Center Act?
Yes.
Okay.
Final product was a result of the work done with the board subcommittee, which at that time was Aaron Lamont and Tony Colodis. We worked closely with Lindsey Thorson from Atkinson. We were reviewing SB 1404, which gave the new language. We compared fee structures from our neighboring dis, school districts. And then we considered how our facilities are used versus how other facilities are used in other districts. We began having implementation meetings with our longstanding partners. We purchased the school dude facility software, not just for the calendaring of the facilities, but also for the work order, maintenance work order modules and the technology work order modules. We started the year with a half FTE, which was Chris. We split her in half and half of her went off and did her energy and the other half started the implementation of, um, the Civic Center policies. And then as of January 2015, we added one more FTE.
Before, oh, well, maybe you've got that. When we adopted the policy, you, we hadn't, the district hadn't come up yet with a fee schedule that was based upon reality. We, we used one that had been in place before or something and it seems to me...
We have a new fee schedule that was adopted with the board policy in AR and we also had a terms of use, uh, terms and conditions. They were all adopted at the same time.
Okay, so they were adopted at the same time and there was some sort of, because you can be challenged on the fees that you charge for a Civic Center permit, they have to, it has to be grounded in reality. So I, I guess my question is, what was the process that we used to come up with those, with the fee schedule?
The initial, the, the initial process was the comparison of the fees in the neighboring districts. We looked at all the different fees for the different type of facilities. And then we looked at the cost of our custodians, grounds, those who would be involved in working any of those, um, events and, um, determined a, a starting fee schedule where we said that we'd come back after a year, see how it worked. And later on in the presentation, you're gonna see that we're gonna say we need to readdress the fee schedule.
Okay, that's what I remember. You were gonna come back in a year with something. Okay, okay.
So during the implement, uh, implementation process, we came across a lot of different things. Some good, some not so good, some very surprising, some quite shocking. When Chris first started, the first thing she did was she tried to collect unpaid fees from previous years. And Chris, how much did you collect initially?
Twenty-eight thousand.
So the first thing she did was she was able to collect $28,000 from previous years before we even got started. We, um, started to bill on actual usage because we had a more efficient system in place. There was more accountability. We were able to begin to bill monthly. And, um, we started having more frequent conversations with the community use groups to determine what their needs were, what their challenges were, shared with them what our challenges are and tried to work together with them to understand what they need so that we can provide the facility for them, but at the same time, make sure that our facilities are maintained and, um, respected. And, um, so one of the biggest things that I think really worked in our favor is that Chris began to make unannounced visits. So as she was out doing her energy audits, she was also out meeting and greeting anyone that she came across with, um, at any of our campuses. She'd introduce herself to them and then she would gradually find out whether or not they had a permit to be there. And if they didn't, she'd share her card and her information with them. And the other thing that happened was, we noticed that the custodians at the schools, different school site personnel, actually began to realize that, oh gee, there's someone from the district office that's really caring about what's going on. So when they would see things, now they would call Chris and say, hey, you know, this weekend there's a group there. I don't think they belong there. Maybe you can check it out. Or she'd be there and there'd be parents waiting for their kids to finish a sport and pick up conversation with them would lead to, you know, there's a group down there and we don't think they have a permit. And so just starting to form those relationships, I think, has really helped. And Chris has really come across a lot of groups that have been using our facilities for many years without insurance, without permits, without fees. So, um, it's been a real, um, eye-opening experience this first initial year. Some of the different problems that we've encountered were, um, community groups that are surprised that they now need to pay their fees and be held accountable for. Um, many groups in the past, we learned, had little handshake deals or, um, just had permission from a site administrator. Um, we, um, are doing a real good job at receiving payments in a timely manner. Now that we're billing monthly, a lot of the community groups actually said it's much easier for them, their own record-keeping, to pay monthly, which is good. We still have a small number of users who are struggling with paying their invoices. And so the process now is, uh, Chris gives them a warning, then if we need to, a letter comes from me and then we finally say, if you don't pay, you lose your permit. And then we get the payment. So that's, that's what we're doing to enforce that. Um, we found that there's a lot of unauthorized access at our facilities, uh, gymnasiums, pools, weight rooms. Um, we found this poor signage at our districts and we'll show you an example, some of the poor signage. And then we're gonna just go ahead and show you some of the misuse of facilities that we found. So just a few pictures of gymnasiums. Groups come in, they help themselves, they move chairs around, tables around, they block doors, they leave extension cords out and then they go away and they don't put things back to where they belong. By moving things around, you can see where they begin to scratch the gym floors that have been recently polished. We have gymnasiums where we have signs posted that says, no food or drink in the gymnasiums and this is what our custodians find. One thing that's gonna help solve these issues are the two custodians that we're gonna be hiring to be paid for out of community services in this next year that we approved in the budget. But these are the types of things that we've been coming across. Pools, we have groups that are using our pools that, and, and I'm not saying that all the groups are doing this. There are some groups that use our pools that tend to be a little lazy and are not, um, willing to roll up the pool covers like they should be. They just pull them out of the pools, put them to the side. It becomes a trip hazard. We've learned in some cases, cranks are missing. So this year we've invested in additional cranks so that Chris can go out and you make sure that they have the equipment to roll the pool covers up. Um, the other thing is that we find groups that perhaps they only have a small group in and so they don't want to remove all the lanes, the, the pool covers and just open up the lane that they're gonna use. That's a liability. All pool covers have to be removed, whether you have one student in there or 50 students in there. And so that's become a problem. We have teams that use a scoreboard, leave and don't turn it off. And then one of the bigger problems, this pile of empty water bottles you see was taken out of the filter. So we've heard many stories about how those empty water bottles get into the pools. The bottom line is, they get into the pools, they get sucked up by our filter and this is what happens. So what are we gonna do about this? Well, we're gonna be meeting with our pool groups and letting them know that, um, when we find abuse by the pools, it's gonna be their responsibility, when they come into the pool, to take a look around and make sure that the pool is in a good condition. Because if they happen to be the last group in the pool that night and the next morning the custodian finds these things, they will be the group that's going to get the warning, the letter, the loss of permit. So we're hoping that they will begin to police themselves because I don't think any of our groups want to be in that situation. Here's some, some issues at the full, at the fields. We'll have groups come in and we're not aware and they want to put certain canopies up or something. So they drill stakes into the grass and by drilling stakes into the grass, they puncture our pipes. And then we have an issue with, uh, water leaks. Um, just some pictures of trash not being picked up. We had a real issue at Rancho Del Mar where we had, um, adult groups going in there and barbecuing on the weekend, drinking, smoking, not just cigarettes. And so you'll see in the bottom picture, we're now locking that gate and we find that that's keeping them out. I'm sure they're gonna get creative and find another way in, but right now we've, we've solved the problem temporarily where we're locking that gate and they can't, can't get to the back area. Here's some, uh, of the signage issues. So you can see we had signs that were made by our maintenance department on, on wood, just painted, that are just falling apart or spray painted, not spray painted, but painted on the side of a wall. Or we had a real legitimate sign where graffiti, someone comes by and puts a big X on it. So, um, we're gonna be replacing signs and making sure they're clear and, and citing, um, civil code, ed code. We're gonna work with the police departments to make sure that we have the right codes and we'll be replacing the signage throughout the district.
One of the challenges there is just getting consistent signage.
Yes, absolutely.
You can walk on the same campus and one part says, no dogs on school hours. Another one says, no dogs on the grass. Another one says, you know, and they're all...
Place your dog.
Right.
Mutually inconsistent.
Clean up after your dog.
Yeah.
Get your dog and enjoy the grass.
Signs will be consistent district-wide. And so there is good news. So it's not all bad news. So that's what we want to share with you. So just looking at revenues. So if we look at 1314, in 1314, we were able to track the rentals and, uh, the leases, the fees. The custodians and utilities that we did collect were washed into the regular utility and custodial costs. So we're not able to pull that out, but I wanted you to see an apples-to-apples comparison. So just in fees alone, in 1314, we received $231,144. In 1415 through June 30th, we still might have some things straggle in. We're at $418,375. In addition to that $418, because we're tracking everything this year, we've collected another $105, $105,000, which was to pay specifically for either utilities or custodial costs. So here's a picture of our financial summary for 1415. We had total revenues of $523,792. Total expenditures were $182,948. We have an ending fund balance in our, um, use of facilities Civic Center Fund of $340,843. Now, because of this, we're able to, what are our next steps? Well...
Before you go there, what, what were the total expenditures made up of?
Um, they were made up of Chris's partial salary, uh, several months of salary for the account clerk, uh, custodial, uh, salaries, some utilities, uh, some parts, replacement parts, like the cranks for, um, uh, the pool covers. And I don't remember the rest. Uh, the trial balance. The largest part was in salaries.
Oh, the largest part was reimbursement. Go back one slide. $105,000 was reimbursement of stuff, presumably you're reimbursing an actual expense.
The 105 is, the bulk of that was custodial salaries though, the 105.
Okay, fair enough.
I would say about 35,000 or so was probably utilities. So what are our next steps? One thing we have to do is reevaluate the fee structure. We've learned different things and during this year where we had no fee structure for certain things like, um, when a filming company wants to come to our site and do filming over a weekend. We didn't consider things like that. We have classroom usage fees for, um, different groups, but we've been contacted by, for example, Linnata Bay Homeowners Association that wants to come in and have, hold their homeowners association meeting there. Do we, do we want to charge them the full fee or do we want to consider something else? Um, there's different situations that have come up that we want to look at in, in the fee structure and reevaluate some of the fees that we have and, uh, take a look at what some of the other districts have done so far. Um, we want to incorporate some strong penalties which may or may not result in the loss of permits for those groups that are either not paying their fees or not taking care of our facilities. We're gonna look at card key systems for gyms, pools and weight rooms, which will tell us who exactly is entering those facilities and at what time. And we'll be able to remotely lock the facilities as well. New signage, we've discussed. Right now, I've asked A.S.K.I.P. to send out a group that is gonna go and look around district-wide at all our signage, give us recommendations for proper language and that way we can have uniformed signage throughout the district. The hiring of the new two custodians, which will be effective as soon as they get them hired, that's gonna help tremendously in making sure that our facilities are locked and cleaned up on the, uh, especially on all the weekend events because these two custodians will work weekends. We've, we're beginning go-for-abatement in the 14, 16 school year.
And when the custodians work weekends, are they earning time and a half?
No, we're, we have a special schedule for them where they work. I don't know if they're both going to do Wednesday through Sunday or if one will do Wednesday through Sunday and the other one will do Friday through Tuesday. Gopher abatement, we're starting. Well, that's been a real problem in our district, even for our students, because there's so many gopher holes in all of our fields.
Are we hiring?
Yes.
We don't have a gopher man?
No, we're hiring, um, Chris, what's the name of the gopher company?
R and B.
R and B or something.
I have a gopher man.
R and B.
The guy's awesome.
The gopher guys.
Gopher com.
Yeah. So, so starting the 15, 16 school year, we're doing a district-wide gopher abatement.
You know, the drier your, your ground gets, the more gophers you're getting.
Oh, no.
So as you cut back, you're gonna see more. Well, at least that's what's happening in my backyard, so...
And then one of the things that we need to discuss and I would appreciate any way in from the board is the determination of a fair method of priority use of pools and gyms. So this year, the implementation year, we followed the practice that has been in place for many years, which is, the group that's been with the district the longest gets first priority and then it goes down the list. So the newest group into the district gets what's left over. Now, we could continue that or we can say, well, how can we spread the use of the facilities out more evenly? The result of that, though, would take a longstanding group who's been here for many years, paid all of their fees timely, taking good care of the facility, where we're saying, gee, we want to make room for other groups, so we're gonna take time away from you.
Have you ever, no, finish.
Then you have a new group that's a, a good group, starting out, taking care of the facilities, paying all their fees and they would like more time, but we don't have the time because we have other groups that are using the time. Do we make room for those groups or do we say, you have to wait your turn until someone gives up time? So those, uh, those are discussions we have to have. We have to determine what is the fair method and I would definitely love the, to hear the board's input in that. It's primarily in the pools and the gymnasiums that we're having these issues. Out in the fields, our soccer groups are pretty cooperative and you take that field, I'll take that... Out in the fields, our soccer groups are pretty cooperative and you take that field, I'll take that field this year. When we meet before school starts this year, they may swap again. We're fine. They just, based on their registrations, know how many fields they need.
I know in the past, way back when, when the board was involved in all of this, one of the questions asked was which groups are made up primarily of district students and which groups are primarily made up of students from outside of the district. And I don't know if we're asking that question anymore. I don't even know if it's an appropriate question.
It is an appropriate question. And for the pool groups, I did ask for the rosters to determine that. And Chris, did we get them all?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so we got them all and Amy was sorting them by the number of groups, so we can actually provide that information.
Because we found in the past that there were groups that had very few PV students.
You have groups that use the field that have no PV students. I mean, the fields.
Yeah.
The...
You got more fields than you got pools, though.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say. I mean, we really have two issues. I mean, we don't really have issues with the field so much. We really don't. And, you know, the classrooms and stuff like that, we don't. But the pools in particular and the gyms, we have a chronic shortage of use. And you've suggested two ways. I would throw in another thing that you need to consider, and that's it has to be actual use. Whatever system we're going to use, oldest rights, like water rights, first in line, we're going to turn off the junior guys before the senior guys get touched, is a legitimate way of doing it. Another way of doing it is divide it by the number of participants and say, okay, we've got 3,000 participants. You have 1,000 of them. You get a third of the time. But regardless of whichever way you pick, it needs to be, the use has to be for their own use, meaning that we have groups that will go in and will reserve times and then will sublease them out to others or let others use it, and this pool is being used or the gym is being used, but not by the group that has the permit. And that's not the point. I mean, we're going to get to the same, I'm going to raise the thing about the civic center permit question for free speech. It's the same thing. Do we allow other people to piggyback on a permit we've issued? So we've issued a permit to the farmer's market. We have other groups that want to walk in. Do they get to piggyback on the farmer's market permit, or do they have to get their own permit? It's the same with the pools. If you have a pool and you have the uses XYZ Aquatic Club and they're letting the city use it, or another club use it, or private lessons use it, or whatever, that's not the goal to me. I mean, that's one thing I would say regardless of however we...
Now, this year, as far as pools go, I don't believe we have any of that happening. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris. In the gyms, we're having a harder time controlling the gyms. Chris is always going in and finding that happening with the gym groups.
Then the key card issue is, kind of rises to the top of the...
The key card rises to the top for another really, you didn't even see some of the stuff. Wide-open pool fence at 11:00 in the morning with nobody in the pool, nobody monitoring the pool. A three-year-old could walk through the gate and go into the pool. No monitoring. We have to think back a few years to one of our high school coaches giving keys to his players and the player has a health incident in the gym by himself. I mean, insane things like that, that we expose ourselves every day and we have no idea what's going on in those two facilities.
One thing to think about, I actually learned a lot about this issue this month because my husband is investigating this scandal in Orange County involving use of facilities at schools, school districts in local areas where nonprofit groups aren't actually really nonprofit groups. And so what a lot of Orange County school districts do is they prioritize nonprofit groups. So that would be something to think of too, if that's important. I'll just throw it out there as something to think about. So to me, I mean, the highest priority would be serving our local residents, our local kids. And nonprofits, maybe that would be something you would want to prioritize over for profit groups. So if you have a nonprofit AYSO, I'll use a field even though I guess it's not an issue, you know, over the LA Galaxy, which is a for-profit organization worth billions of dollars, whose athletes aren't mostly from PV. So that would be several reasons why, if there was a conflict at Dapple Gray, that AYSO, serving local kids in this region, it would have a priority. But serving the local kids, to me, is important because we're the taxpayers in the district. So finding that information out, I know is a lot of work probably for you to do. It's good news, I guess, if you don't have to worry about the fields because that's a lot of kids, a lot of people you have to deal with.
But it can be done. And as we look at doing some of the revisions to the fee structure and the board policy and the AR, it would be a good idea to talk about priority use in the board policy because it would take all the second guessing away from everybody. It would make our jobs easier.
And then I guess that...
And it would make it easier for anyone that wants to come in because they can read it and completely understand where they fall.
And then the other issue is kind of what's too small to have to have a permit, I guess. So if the kids want to go kick the soccer ball around or whatever.
Okay, so this is what we do.
That's the hard part too.
This is what Chris looks for, and I'll let her speak to this a little more too. What we're looking for is not the dad that's going to go out on the field with his boys and kick a ball around, teach him how to bat. A group of guys going on a Saturday morning to an outside basketball court and shooting some hoops. What we're looking for is the people that are in the gymnasium doing this.
And they're charging money, so even if...
But they're not paying, they shouldn't be in there. That's what we're finding.
But if it's a coach giving lessons or something, I imagine that happens all the time and they just sort of show up.
But Lydia, are we putting in wear and tear or something, for instance, the gym floors?
Yes.
That get scratched, and then they have to be repaired, and then they have to be resanded, and you know, and all that. So we're putting that into the fee schedule too?
Right. And at the bottom of the list here, you see developed long-term facility plans. The one thing that we've been telling our high schools is that, our hope is that these dollars are going to begin to be turned around and we will take care of those gym floors. Right now, you have the boosters who are taking care of refinishing gym floors. You have boosters who are paying for reseating softball fields, doing the striping in the football fields. These are all things that these dollars can be used for and should be used for. So although we ended the first year with $340,000 as a net profit, that's why I have this on this list. Okay, so let's develop some long-term facility plans so that we don't just use this as a fund where, gee, look at how much money we can make and let's start banking it away, but let's start alleviating some of those things that the boosters have been responsible for and start maintaining the facilities or card key system. Things are going to improve the facilities for our kids.
In reality, it's no different than when we weren't charging overhead to our, some of our fee programs. For years and years, they were using the facilities and weren't having overhead charged. So it's the same thing here. $340 is a loser rate really because there's a lot of overhead associated with it. Otherwise, your fee structure would be, wouldn't pass muster.
So just a couple of other things. We have SchoolDude training on August 12th for our school site personnel just to go over and make sure they all know how to input into the calendar. It's going to be absolutely mandatory that they put all school events in the calendar because we've had issues with double bookings where office manager didn't put events in the calendar. Chris schedules an event, they get there, there's something else going on, and then it's embarrassing for Chris trying, you know, quickly find some other place to send this group. And so we have training on August 12th, and then by about mid-September, it's going to be open to the community. And let me talk a little bit about how much of it is going to be open to the community. So a community member will be able to log on, pick the school they're interested in, look and see what's available, submit their application, and then it's still going to go through the processing with Chris or Deirdre, where we're still going to do that final check with the school, call them and say, you don't have anything here. I want to put a group here, just double checking, and then we get back to the group. So before I move off the screen, can I just spend 30 seconds and review the method to determine the use? So if I'm hearing the few comments that came from the board, would you like me then to request all rosters from the groups, request all their 501(c)(3) forms so we truly determine whether they're nonprofits, and then come and talk about a possible formula of usage?
Yeah, I would support that. I just don't want to get too close to coming up with the equation. I'd like to see all the information. There may be a group or a club on the hill that's put thousands of dollars over there. I just want to have all the information possible. We also have the ability to use a licensing agreement, and there might be cases where that trumps even whatever equations we come up with or variables. So I think the more information we can get will allow us to have a more comprehensive conversation about how we want to prioritize.
Yeah, probably in this case, having a couple of concrete examples will make it easier for us to come up with a strategy. You know, in the abstract, you can have the water rights discussion, and you can have the c)(3), and you can have the how many kids and the thing. But until you kind of have a concrete example or two to understand how that would actually play out in the real world, it's kind of hard to understand how the policy would work unless you kind of just talk through it.
Okay. And then with that, if you have any other questions for Chris and I?
No, I think you, I mean, I thank you guys. The subcommittee presentation was good. This was very good. I mean, that's why I thought it was important for the board to hear it as a group because there are a lot of challenges. I would, I think one of the things we did say is we wanted you to come back with the key card stuff. So that one, that one needs to come back sooner rather than later. And we can work with a schedule to get it on the agenda. Because I think that, unless I'm wrong, I think there'd be a strong interest in all five board members in...
Would you like a demo at the same time?
Yeah, as long as it's not a 30-minute demo, yeah.
It's really a cool demo.
All right. Anything else, any other direction, guys?
Just, I want the finances with the key cards as well.
Sure.
All right, so with that, I have one speaker, Tab Almento.
Okay. I've met with Lydia and Amy O'Chris, so they both know my concerns before coming here. But the five of you don't necessarily all know them. We are a unified school district, and I agree that all the community groups should be following the rules and all the community groups should be paying their fees. That's critical. The money needs to go back to the schools. The booster clubs need to lessen what they're paying for and eventually hopefully gets to the parents where there's less participation donation. But on the same note, all community groups should be allowed equal access to the facilities. So just as we give our community a choice between the two different high schools with very different programs, we have Cornerstone, Rancho Vista with different models, I think that we need to be able to offer a variety of programs on the hill with a variety of coaching models and that it's not a one-size-fits-all. So when you're talking about this group versus that group, an old group versus a new group, times change, philosophies of athletics change, coaching changes. And so to decide one group has a better way of doing it or not isn't something that the district should necessarily, how do I say, set as a priority. We have three pools. There are currently five groups that want to use the pools, three swim teams and two water polo teams. Because of the fee schedule that we have set up right now, or the allocating of time that we have set up now, in the months of May and June, the first two groups that filed a permit historically with the district got between 70% and 80% of the pool time. The other three groups were given the remainder of the 20% to 30% that they had a share. And most of the practice times were 7:30 to 9:30 at night, those kinds of things. Well, 7:30 to 9:30 at Penn, but not at PV High because you can't go quite that late. But the late times are not really a youth sports type of time for practice, and it's not optimal. So whereas the first time, the first groups that signed a permit historically got to choose their times, they would choose the five to seven slots at a couple of different pools, right? And it's not against one group versus another group, but that's not using the pool facilities equitably amongst the community and it's not making the different programs available to the community. So, over the years, I've said it to several of you individually, but I strongly encourage you to come up with a written policy, something that we can put in paper, whether it's a policy or procedure or whatever, something that Chris can enforce, that Lydia can put in front of the different community groups so that there's an equitable way for allocating the facilities. Everybody follows the rules, everybody pays the fees, and there's an equal amount of time allowed to the different community groups that want to use our facilities.
Thank you.
Just one second. I forgot to tell you, this is a sample of the month of April of all the usage in this district. It's in your packet.
So could you take us to a page where the pools are?
Well, I can take you to like, for example, Peninsula High School.
What page would that be?
Little say up at the top.
Yeah, I know.
It's deep in there. Here's Palos Verdes Peninsula High School.
Yeah, it's going to be stapled. One of the stapled pages. And it's not just the pool, it's everything at Peninsula High School.
Three. Okay, I've got one of four, so this is...
It's pretty...
Yeah, it's one of three. It's the biggest one.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on. One of four. Is it the end?
And it's Peninsula up at the top.
Palos Verdes.
Getting closer, there's a couple after PV.
Okay, hold on. PV Intermediate. Peninsula, okay.
So you can see the first week, which the first, April 1st was a Wednesday.
Is it what page? Is it one of three?
Yeah, one of three. I'm right at the top, first week. April 1st was a Wednesday. You had Armada in the pool from 8:00 to 10:00. You had PvP High School volleyball, 2:00 to 4:30 p.m. And then again, 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., could have been boys and then girls. Then you had PVBA breakers, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. On Thursday, Armada, 8:00 to 10:00 p.m., swim club. PvPHS volleyball, 2:00 to 4:30, 2:00 to 5:00. If I remember correctly, it's boys and then girls. So you had Trident Lacrosse, 5:30 to 7:30. PVBA breakers, 6:00 to 9:00, and PV Water Polo, 7:00 to 9:00.
Can I ask a question just looking at this? Because you don't know what the approved times are, what the availability is or anything else. You just have whether it's approved, pending, or whatever, these little AA is approved, AB, AR is approved, recently changed and so on.
I'll tell you what we'll do. We had to do this very quickly. So we just quickly downloaded by school from SchoolDude. But we can actually give you a calendar per pool, per gym.
So the pool will have, on Monday, the availability is from 8:00 to 10:00.
Yeah.
And from 4:00 to 9:00.
We can give you one of those.
And then you can show in the pool or the gyms which are the ones we're really talking about in the two different schools.
Yeah. It's just that Dawn had just asked for it, and so this is the fastest thing we can do that can show you at a glance how much activity there is at a school, but...
Doesn't show me the scheduling constraints or anything else.
The monthly ones.
Yeah, but I can remember within the recent past, we had some big discussions about the pools. And I can't remember what the outcome was, but somehow we made some decisions at this point. At 20 to 10, I couldn't tell you what those decisions were, but you know what? We made decisions and it was not a long time ago.
We didn't decide anything on these couple of issues, the pools and the gyms. Those are the ones we have the constraints and we need to, we actually just need to give some guidance to come up with a written policy that everyone can understand and follow.
Well, we have to, yeah, like, we would have to get more detailed information on the pools and then we could make some analysis of what's going on.
Perfect.
Okay, it's a little sidebar here. I think September makes sense for us to bring back more information.
Thank you. All right, consent calendar. Barbara, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
Yeah, A, B, C, D, E, and...
Which ones?
That's N1, N1 and.
Want to just pull N1A through D?
E.
E.
E. And then N3A.
Which last one, sorry?
N3A.
N3A.
The food contract, the frozen food contract.
I was going to have to pull that anyway, perfect. All right, Malcolm?
I'm good.
N2D.
Tony, N2D, LOA, okay.
And I have N3B.
N3B. Can someone make a motion to approve N1E, NF, and G, and H? N2ABC, N3C, N3D, N4A, N4B?
So move.
Second.
What was the first one on there?
N1E.
No, that's been pulled.
You wanted to pull that one too? I thought you said the first four, first five?
Five.
Okay. Start mine over with N1F instead of E.
All right. Move approval.
We have a second.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so before we do the pulled items, I have a speaker who wanted to comment on contracts, and there's not a particular one. So Sandy, do you want to speak now?
Yes, I'm sorry for the vagueness, but there was no agendas to follow, so I was just, had to, didn't, couldn't really put down an agenda item. I know that we were discussing administrative contracts, and I was able to look at them in advance. I appreciate that you made them available for us to look at. And I really, after looking at them, it's not clear still how much the administrators are actually making after you look at them. And one of the reasons why it's not clear is that with the exception of Dr. Austin, the other four administrators are at the top of their pay grade. They're at the absolute apex of what you can make, you know, on their salary structure. And then it just says they'll all be given annual adjustments. And they've been given multiple annual adjustments over time. And so at the end, what are they making? What's their salary? The public has a right to know how much the public servants are making, and so it's a simple question. What is the actual annual salary of all these five individuals? That's my simple question. I just want to know what the actual annual salary is for each of the five individuals on these contracts that are being approved.
Okay, I don't have that information in front of me, but John can get it to you because it is a number. And then the increases, when they're on the top of the salary schedule, just means that if we have an increase next year of 3%, then it applies to everybody, the 3% would be what would be applied. There's no additional step or column or anything else that moves. It just is the same percentage across whatever we approve.
I understand that, but if they've been at that top of that salary, so last year they got the 6% and the year before they got the 5% or the year before they got the 2% or whatever. It's been growing, growing, growing.
I do understand what you're saying. So we can get you a number in time for this year. And then you can, by looking at the salary schedule, you can see they have no place to go other than whatever the percentage would be for next year. But we can get you the information. I'm sure it's in a budget somewhere, but we can get you the exact numbers.
Thank you. I appreciate that, that's all.
I just need a quick clarifying question for Sandy. I just don't want to chase around and have the wrong question. The salary scale is attached, and the step and column is outlined in their contract. So if it says step six of the attached scale, what part is confusing so I'll know where to direct our staff to?
When six, when six is the top number.
Right.
And after they've been at that top number, they've been at that top number for multiple years.
Right.
And each year they've received, you know, a boost above and beyond that due to, you know, the annual, the annual extra, whatever it is, the annual raise that they've been allocated, then I don't know where they're at now.
This is, this is today's current number. This is the number. So it doesn't matter how long they've been here.
That's not clear. That, that, that is not clear, sir. If that's the truth, if that is so, that their salary is exactly what's printed on the step six, and this is the current salary, this is it. And that's all there is to it. And then they're going to get something on top of it next year? Fine. That was not clear from looking at it, because I believe some of them, from looking at what they've made in previous years, were maybe above that already.
No, there's no, there's no contracts in previous years for some of them. The contract does state what it is for this year because they're all new or amended.
Okay, so, so what's on there for a step six? If they're currently making a step six, then, and it's step six is on there, that's what they're making this year, and that's the end.
They're making that plus whatever benefits and car allowance.
Oh, and if, well, and the car allowances. And then if they're also allowed though, a bonus, I didn't understand how the bonus worked for, because it said something about a bonus per year if they have a doctorate degree or something like that. And I didn't understand how it works, bonus per year per doctorate's degree was kind of a little confusing.
That I don't know, we'll have to get back to you.
It's actually on the salary schedule. It's all listed out for you on the attachment.
Okay.
The per year was a little bit confusing.
All right.
All right, and regarding the car, just to, my husband works at Raytheon, where they handle sales, his company handles sales currently of about 1.8 billion. And they're the people who, the only people who get car allowances are VPs, and they get car allowances of about 500 per month. And so I want you to realize that what we're giving in car allowances to people who handle sal, who handle something that's $100 million compared to something that's $1.8 billion is really incredibly generous and well and beyond anything in industry standards. Just food to think about when we're looking at comparing cost and reducing costs. Why are we giving such extraordinarily outrageous benefits?
Thank you.
So, John, is it common practice amongst school districts similar to ours in a competitive market to have car allowances?
In my experience, if you were to look at management contracts across local districts throughout California, you would see things like car allowances or mileage allowances built into those. And that's been occurring for decades.
And I have to say, the reason I said I have no problem with us giving the numbers is we're going to be transparent about the salaries anyway. And so if someone's not clear about what it is, even if it, we think it is clear, we just make sure we responded accordingly so that everyone is on the same page. And it's the numbers we're going to end up giving to the transparency group anyway, so. And generally, all this stuff is on our website.
My question's coming from the fact that I agree with everything Larry said, and I, if we're writing, right, as a writer, if the reader's not understanding what we're writing, then it's our fault, so we have to write it again. So I completely agree.
Right, I agree.
But I also think there is an ethos, there's a, there's a perception out there, especially within public education and administration, that one, it's bloated, they're always making more money than they deserve, and that we can cut. And while we as board members and fiscal agents of the district need to constantly be making sure we are being as efficient as possible, we also want to retain the best employees. And there's a balance in there that's a constant tension. So I just want to make sure that we're going to be having conversations coming up in the near future about how do we make sure we get the best employees? And not just administrators, but teachers and principals, and attract the best people. And if we're going to do that, we need to be competitive with other districts. And that means that we're probably going to have to consider either paying more money or figure out other ways that we compensate. So that's, I just want to make sure I'm clear on why I was asking the question.
All right, so now we do have five things that were pulled by Barbara, so.
Six things.
Well, the first five, N1A through E, or you have separate comments about each or the same comments about all?
I just wanted to vote for them separately. That was my sole reason for pulling.
Okay. Any other comments on N1A? All right. Someone make a motion, please?
I move approval of N1A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
There was an aye, I just missed it.
All right. N1B.
I move approval of item N1B.
I'll second that one.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, no.
No, okay, so opposed, yes, you're opposed. Okay. N1C.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, N1D.
I move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, N1E.
I move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Tony, N2D.
Don, you want to summarize our conversation earlier, and then maybe, I'm looking for your guidance on whether we just leave it or whether it's maybe something we investigate further.
That's probably a great question. First of all, Dr. Culverhouse, do we have complete confidence that we understand this item well enough to talk to our board with extreme confidence?
Extreme confidence.
There's a lot of disclaimers in there.
Basically, when, if you take a look at this, we are, this is a renewal with going into the Orange County Department of Education, a renewal of the contracts of the, and as you can see, Pacific Coast High School was one of those agreements. When I first arrived at the end of August, questioning the number of sign-offs that we had for the interim, for the online education, three years ago, we had 176, 336, and now this, the last year, 545. Looking at coming in and canceling that did not seem like a really good idea at the time without gathering data. Dr. Fricker is in the process right now of gathering data for us. And so in approving this letter of agreement, it ended July, June 30th. And by approving this, we're allowing those, the students moving forward with Pacific Coast High School to be, to go into an agreement with, with the Orange County Department of Education.
So my question is, I don't think they were intended to be connected. I think it's just kind of a coincidence that it happened to be that Trent showed data first, because this kind of reads like, listen, when there's certain situations, right, you have community schools, correctional educational schools, home edu, it's kind of reading like, hey, there's a certain student population that we can't serve that they can serve very well, this is a win-win. But now, as we talk about the earlier conversation with the online classes, and this is the same county office that is, and it happens to even list Pacific Coast, I'm just raising it, is there an unintended consequence that we haven't foreseen by entering into this that may actually not allow us to do what we're talking about doing maybe in the near future?
I would suggest you pull it.
Yes, exactly.
I would suggest you pull it and get clarification, because you signed this.
And it may be that it's, they're, they don't connect, but.
So this also serves kids with special needs or special needs where they need to.
No, this is.
This is just for this online summer school or whatever it is?
It's for the Community Home Education Program also, it's a homeschooling.
So it's both?
Right. And so, and what I is looking at of the number of students that are in the CHEP program. We know that there are students in the Pacific Coast High School because our counselors approved them. And so the data that Trent referenced to the 545, that was at the end of last summer. And the numbers that I referenced were pulled off of Ares because that's the actual credit that was given. So we wanted to be very sure. We do not know how many students have, you know, entered into the agreement this summer, but I'm assuming that with the 545 the year before, that those, that number has maintained or gone up. I don't have that, that data as of right now.
But even if it was lower, let's say it went down to 400, if we're talking about having conversations of developing our own program in the next summer, that would want to eliminate this opportunity, I don't know if we want to enter into a five-year agreement. Or maybe it's not, maybe I'm missing it, but that's, that's why I flagged it, that's why I brought up the question.
One thing I'd point to is Section 5, it's the termination clause. Either side can terminate with 30-day notice. So it may not be as high stakes. My other question would be for Dr. Culverhouse, do we know if this is so time-sensitive that it can't come back in August?
I would, I do not know the answer to that question. I could pull it, it could come back in August. I think that without Dre in the audience of knowing when the students would be looking at that, when we would be looking at the information on Ares to find out when that student would need confirmation of that credit to go on to their transcripts.
But you know, this contract raises a very interesting question. Was our school district, did our school district have a contractual agreement with that high school to pay for those services?
Well, if, if you look, it ended June 30th of this year.
No, but my point is.
She'd like to see the existing contract, one that was just.
Yeah, well, my, how is it that they are billing us unless it's by this contract? Is there any other agreement we have with the Orange County Department of Education?
Lydia, you want to explain the funding model with the new LCFF?
Yeah, Barbara, this is new because of the LCFF model. Previously, under the old revenue limit, I don't know if you remember the old supplemental summer hours that we would apply for? Not apply for, but we were able to submit hourly attendance for summer school that we ran at our own districts. With LCFF, that went away. And supplemental hourly programs actually became Tier 3, and they were swept anyway. So what Orange County, and we also have a few students in LA County do, is they actually submit attendance for the students that are in their programs. Prior to LCFF, the state would calculate the attendance and send the money straight to them. In LCFF, the state no longer does that. So they are submitting the attendance, the state sends the money to the District of Residence. So it comes to us, we basically pass the money right back to Orange County Office of Ed and LA County Office of Ed. So it's really not our money to even keep, because we didn't, we didn't provide a service to these students, nor did we claim attendance for that. And so when we in our budget show the revenue limit amount, we have already adjusted for this line item. So it's not like, oh no, now we have to write a check for $230,000 to Orange County Office of Ed, that's impacting our expenditures. It's actually a negative revenue line item. It's, it's another unfortunate screwy thing that happened with LCFF.
But we're losing our kids to somewhere else, though, still. Okay, but then why do we need this agreement? Because this agreement is, now that you've explained all that, why, why do we need this agreement? Because it's not part of the summer program?
This agreement actually allows the students to take the online classes.
Which we have already approved through our counseling department and then through our office.
Only, I'm just because I'm the one that raised it, right? The trick is that when it was, when it was certain student demographics, right, then it made sense. And Dr. Austin and I even talked about it, and thought we just worked it out, we're like, okay, we got this. No, it's.
It was wrong.
Well, no, it's okay, we both were trying to figure it out, right? It's, it's just that embedded in with that very unique student population that needs these services that we can do, also has the ability to basically have any student take online courses in the summer. Am I correct in that assessment?
That is.
So I'm just bringing up again that if we're trying to figure out a way in the near future of how we either minimize or potentially take that, I don't know if, I just asking is a five-year MOU what we want to enter. Not because of the other three, which actually we may legally have to have something where we might need to, but maybe we need a modification where the, I don't know.
My, my suggestion would be, I mean, listen to all this, is that let's just pull it for next time. I can't imagine.
That's fine. That's more information.
Three weeks or whatever will make a difference.
We'll get the answers to your questions, too.
The question I have, is it, is it possible to have the agreement and not include Pacific Coast High School? Because I'm assuming those other services are serving a population of our kids who otherwise wouldn't be served. So is Pacific Coast High necessary?
I'll get that information for you.
Do some work on that.
We'll get some more work on it.
Good question.
So we're pulling this?
It's awfully convoluted, the whole thing is convoluted.
All right. N3A. N3A?
Oh, just a quick question, because in the agenda report, we're told how much money we saved, but I couldn't find, and maybe I just didn't find...
Barbara, it's not listed there, and I talked to Patrick. And just a little history to help everyone understand, especially because Linda wasn't here a couple of years ago. We used to have, we used to purchase our foods from Gold Star. Our frozen foods from Gold Star.
Aren't they involved with the scandal in LA Unified right now?
They may be, but they were part of the whole San Gabriel co-op at that time.
They're big enough.
And in the 1314 year, we started to use Levo Foods. And so for 1213, for example, we spent $350,000 on frozen foods. By moving to Levo in 1314, the same meals, we only spent $315,000. In 1415, we spent $317,000. So what Patrick did when he wrote that it's a savings of over $30,000 is he took all the items he purchased in the year from Levo, then compared it to Gold Star. And he's saying the savings is 30,000 less than it would have been had we remained with Gold Star. And I understand it's not clear, the agenda item that Patrick wrote up. So there is time, and if you want us to bring it back and write it more clear, we can.
No, I believe you. It was just a question. I just wondered how we got to the number. And I honestly don't understand whether you, for food services, whether you order food weekly or monthly, or if you do a...
You do weekly as you build your menu, because you don't, we don't have that many huge walk-ins. And then it also depends on whether or not a particular food item is selling well, or if you're gonna try a different one, and things like that.
A district food service director will look at proposals from different suppliers, these being the distributors. And the distributor marks things up one of two ways. They either mark it up by the case, so they have X number of dollars per case, $3, $4, $5, whatever. Or they mark it up by a percentage, 12%, 14%, 15%. It's very easy to tell when you'll go to the different distributors and say, I have this basket of five items, tell me my price. And you can compare very simply. It's the same shwan pizza at five different places. Levo's this much, Gold Star's this much, Joseph Webb is this much, US Foods is this much, Cisco's that much. And so you can then take whatever the difference is, extrapolate it, and come up with a number of...
I just didn't know how.
You might tell Patrick, one of the reasons why Levo is cheaper is because they don't pay their bills to their suppliers on time.
We're okay with that.
That's one, honestly, why they're cheaper than Gold Star. All right.
Patrick will be here next month.
Good, I'll tell him personally. Okay, so Barbara, you pulled the item.
Yeah, so I move approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Abstain. I abstain because I do business with Gold Star, I do business with Levo. Don't do business with the Palisverdes Unified School District. All right. All right, if I do, I'm aware of it, and Patrick knows better. Okay, N3B?
Yeah, so I pulled this one, and Dr. Austin did a good job of explaining to me, as the new person, that these agreements don't mean we're hiring these people for any particular total dollar amount. My question was just this, it lists what... I should have been a lawyer, all this great fees that the people make that work there. But besides lawyers, they have something called an education consultant for $175 an hour and a communication services consultant, which sounds to me like a PR person, for $235 an hour. So I just want to make sure when we're using this firm that we're only using the attorneys and not this other stuff. Or would there ever be a reason where you would need the other stuff? Because it just seems like we want to hire them as lawyers, not as consultants for Gold Star.
There are times when we might call a partner, and the partner can even tell us, like, I can save you money on this. I can have one of these guys do some of this work for you. So sometimes the partner will direct work to one of these other levels of people.
Okay, as long as we're not hiring, I mean, give it to the paralegal, that's the cheapest.
We don't call these first, we call the partners directly first.
Okay, I just want to make sure on that. Otherwise, the rest of it, I understand, so I will move approval of that.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm gonna make a comment before we vote. I just want to compliment our group. Both these legal service consulting agreements are rising out of trying to improve the depth of the advice that we can get. In each case, we've identified something that our current provider doesn't do as well. And not that the current provider is not a good provider, but they're looking and trying to find better alternatives with better services, one of which is dealing with privacy, which has been raised a bunch of times, of a firm that has a better privacy expert. So rather than just relying on who we have and trying to work through it, we're trying to actually do something better. And so I applaud the efforts of the administration to look and seek always the best possible provider. And sometimes, even though the price may be higher on the list price, someone who knows what they're talking about can do it in one-third, one-half, one-tenth at a time and save us a ton of money, even though the per-hourly charge is more. So that's my spiel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. O1 is information, O2 is information. Or adjourned?
I know.